Welcome. Welcome. I'm David Reese, the Chair of the Rent Guidelines Board, and I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the third of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lots, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969.
I don't have any sound coming in from the camera. I don't have any sound.
These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing March 11th through 2022, September 20th through 2023. I will now take roll call. Please respond at present. Christina DeRose. Robert Erlich. Shayla Garcia. Kristin Gonzalez Rivera. Arpet Gupta. Alex Schwartz. Christina Smith. I'm not so happy. 2023. I will now take roll call. Please respond at present. The next meeting of this board will be an in-person public hearing this Wednesday, June 15th, at the Main Theater Hostess Center for the Arts and Culture of the Bronx, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please note that this venue has COVID-19 protocols that must be followed in order to attend the hearing. The details for attending this hearing, including COVID-19 protocols, can be found in the meeting schedule on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. You can also pre-register to speak at this in-person hearing on our website or by calling the R G B. Pre-registration of this hearing will end at 12:00 p.m. on June 14th. The June 15th hearing will also be streamed live on our YouTube channel. To find out how to watch, visit the R G B website. You'll also be taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. This testimony must be submitted no later than Thursday, June 16th. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472.
No, I think it's my camera.
The final vote will take place on Tuesday, June 21st, starting at 7:30 p.m. at the Great Hall. You can find information on submitting testimony.
It's coming in through the sound.
The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming on R G B's YouTube channel. Please note that there are COVID-19 protocols to enter the Great Hall. The details for attending this meeting, including COVID-19 protocols, can be found in the meeting schedule on our website or call the R G B through 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. I'd like to thank all of you for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Before we proceed with testimony, I'd like to go over rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. Please be aware that this venue requires that you are all masked at all times in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. And so, please keep your mask over your mouth and over your nose, and that's the way that we each protect each other. There are complimentary masks at the signing desk in case you've misplaced or broken your mask. If you wish to speak, you must confirm your presence with the R G B staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call out several names in advance in order to let you know that you will soon be called to speak. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the R G B staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will also try to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers who utilize interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock. And the clock is right there. We will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. We'll continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you're still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify will have the fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you for your cooperation.
Buenas tardes. Soy David Reese, el presidente de la Normas de la R G B, que es las normas de alquiler de Nueva York. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de Nueva York, que esta es la tercera de las cuatro audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lots, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de viviendas sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1er de octubre de 2022 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2023. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Christina DeRose, ausente. Robert Erlich, presente. Shayla García, presente. Cristian González Rivera, presente. Arpet Gupta, presente. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adam Soltran, presente. Y David Reese, presente. Por favor, que consten actas, que hemos logrado un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública en persona este miércoles 15 de junio, en el Main Theater del Hostess Center for the Arts and Culture in the Bronx, desde las 4:00 de la tarde hasta las 9:00 de la noche. Tenga en cuenta que este lugar tiene protocolos del COVID-19 que deben seguirse para asistir a la audiencia, y los detalles para asistir a esta audiencia, al igual que los protocolos del COVID-19, se pueden encontrar en el calendario de reuniones en nuestra página web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 de la mañana y 5:00 de la tarde. También podrá inscribirse por adelantado para hablar en persona en esta audiencia al visitar nuestra página web o al llamar a la junta. La pre-inscripción para esta audiencia finalizará a las 12 del mediodía el 14 de junio. La audiencia del 15 de junio también se transmitirá en vivo por nuestro canal de YouTube, y si desea saber cómo sintonizarnos, por favor visite la página de la Junta R G B. También aceptaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Este testimonio debe presentarse a más tardar el jueves 16 de junio. Usted encontrará datos sobre cómo presentar su testimonio en nuestra página web, nuevamente, nyc.gov/rgb, o puede dejar un testimonio en forma de audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. La votación final tendrá lugar el martes 21 de junio a partir de las 7:30 de la noche en el Great Hall de Cooper Union ubicado en este de la calle 7 en la esquina de la Tercera Avenida. El público podrá asistir en persona o ver la votación en vivo que será transmitida por el canal de YouTube de la junta. Por favor, tenga en cuenta que existen protocolos del COVID-19 para ingresar al Great Hall, y los detalles para asistir a estas reuniones incluidos, los protocolos del COVID-19, se pueden encontrar en el calendario de reuniones en nuestra página web o al llamar al R G B entre las 9:00 y 5:00 de la tarde de lunes a viernes. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para las que deseen declarar ante la junta. Tenga en cuenta que este lugar requiere que usted use una máscara en todo momento para disminuir la transmisión del virus COVID-19. Por lo tanto, debe llevar su máscara mientras declara. Hay máscaras disponibles en la mesa de inscripción. Si desea declarar, debe confirmar su presencia con el personal de la R G B en la mesa de inscripción ubicada próximo a la entrada de este salón. No se llamará a los hablantes sin que hayan pasado por la mesa de inscripción para confirmar su presencia. Hoy tendremos intérpretes español acá. Cuando se inscriba, para declarar, por favor notificarle al personal si desea un intérprete. Trataré de llamar a varios nombres por adelantado para hacerles saber que pronto se les llamará para declarar. Si tiene materiales para distribuirle a la junta, debe dárselos al personal de R G B ubicado en la mesa de inscripción próximo a la entrada. Intentaré alternar los hablantes entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero puede que esto no siempre sea posible. Con el fin de darle cabida a la mayor cantidad de hablantes posible hoy, cada hablante tendrá dos minutos para brindar su testimonio. Se otorgarán dos minutos adicionales a aquellos hablantes que utilicen los servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a los hablantes a controlar su tiempo, disponemos de un reloj. Pondremos el reloj en marcha cuando empiece a hablar. Usted verá el reloj justo delante de usted, allá delante de la tarima. El reloj emitirá un pitido cuando al hablante le queden 30 segundos, y seguirá sonando cuando hayan transcurrido los dos minutos asignados. Si todavía está hablando después de dos minutos, le pediré que termine rápidamente su testimonio. Esperamos que haya muchos hablantes, y la junta desea escuchar a tantos de ellos como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que desee que escuchemos en tan solo dos minutos. Sin embargo, le pedimos que comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de acudir a esta audiencia hoy a declarar tengan una oportunidad de hacer oír sus voces. Les damos las gracias por su cooperación. Muy buenas noches.
We will now begin testimony. Our first speaker is Senator Zellner Myrie. Welcome, Senator. And I'll just say, our next speaker will be Christopher Athenios, and then Carolyn Kropinski.
Thank you. Good afternoon y buenas tardes. I'm State Senator Zellner Myrie. In my district, I represent 117 housing units. Of those 117,000, 49,000 are rent-regulated. That is 40% of my district, including the house that I grew up in and the one that I live in now is rent-regulated. So let me be abundantly clear without a hint of equivocation. Any rent increase is unacceptable and unconscionable. We have a once-in-a-century pandemic and what feels like a once-every-year record profit for the real estate industry. And I've heard a lot of weeping and gnashing of teeth about the condition of the landlords. And if you think it's bad for the landlords, how bad is it for the tenants? I hear a lot about the numbers not adding up, but here's what doesn't add up. When there are rats crawling over the children of our tenants at night, the numbers do not add up. When EMS has to take my own mother down the stairs during a medical emergency from the fifth floor because the elevator doesn't work, the numbers do not add up. When asthmatics are triggered and sent to the E R because the mold is exacerbating their own condition, the numbers do not add up. And under all of those circumstances, all of those cases I've dealt with either personally or in my office, the landlord still demands rent. So we demand proper service. We demand places that we can live in, and we demand a rent freeze. I implore this board, find the courage to do the right thing. And this administration that claims to care about Black and Brown people, that claims to care about the outer boroughs, you find some courage as well. Stand up and do the right thing.
Our next speaker is Christopher Athenios, to be followed by Carolyn Kropinski.
My family and I have devoted our lives to providing decent, affordable housing to New Yorkers for a little over 50 years. We're expected to keep the buildings built in 1883 and 1930 going. The city council passes mandates like energy efficiencies, lead paint, mold, with absolutely no regard of how we're going to pay for this. We're expected to test each occupied apartment for lead by 2025. I've started the process, and it costs over $450 per apartment. That's just to test it. That's not including any remediation. That specific cost is not covered anywhere in the P I O C. The city council passed a law requiring owners to hire engineers to inspect retaining walls in and around their buildings which are publicly accessible. This cost is not reflected in the P I O C. Recently, I received a violation for failure to file such a report. I had to hire an engineer to do the work, not to file the report, but to prove to the city that I was not required to file the report, despite me trying to bring this to the D O B's attention without success. That cost over $6,000 just to prove that I did not have to file the report. That $6,000 could have tested 13 apartments for lead paint. Last summer, Hurricane Ida hit. We had significant flooding which affected the boiler and the elevator. We had to spend thousands of dollars to pump out the water and repair the electrical systems. Now we're forced to spend thousands more for electrical upgrades to install pumps to help deal with this in the future. Again, it's nowhere in the P I O C. Passing 0% increases or low increases like 2% or 3% may seem like help to the tenants in need, but this board and past boards have done these residents a disservice because without reasonable rent increases to cover these mandates, housing quality is deteriorating to the point of no return. The board's job is not about satisfying owners or tenants. It's about maintaining good housing for the future. I hope this board considers the data, examines what is left out of the P I O C, and look at today's inflation and passes a guideline that can preserve and maintain our housing stock so that the numbers make sense. Thank you.
I would just like to remind everyone that's here today that we're here to hear from everyone, and the same respect that you would like to be given to you that you give to other speakers as well. Thank you.
Señoras y señores, les recordamos que queremos que ustedes muestren el mismo respeto por los demás que los demás mostrarán por ustedes esta noche. Muchas gracias.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Kropinski, to be followed by Joanna Wong.
Thank you for having me. How many of you live in a rent-stabilized apartment? Okay. I want to remind you that each and every tenant here today is themselves... I'll stand back. Is themselves a small New York business. We each have a balance sheet. We each have monthly income and expenses. So when you hear today that these rent increases are not affordable, it's because they're not. I have two questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have two questions for the board today. The first is, can you commit to taking questions from tenants and providing public answers in conjunction with Wednesday's hearing to resolve some of the issues that have come up in the 2022 research publications? While I appreciate that a lot of time and energy went into this documentation, these documents raise more questions than they answer. For instance, why is there no conversation in these documents about the fact that in two boroughs, NOI increased in the past year? Why is there no conversation in these documents about the fact that in Manhattan, where NOI is decreasing the fastest, landlords are much more likely to be large businesses, not small business owners, like some of our policymakers have tried to indicate? My second question for the board is this. What is the plan? If you move forward with these rent increases, what is the plan? How are you going to ensure that as tenants pay more per month, that money is reinvested in the quality of life in their buildings? We know from the most recent census data that rent-stabilized tenants are much more likely to face issues with pests, with mold, and other unlivable issues. How are you going to ensure that my elderly neighbor with dementia doesn't have mold on his ceiling? How are you going to ensure that my neighbor with cockroaches in her bathroom doesn't have to deal with that? How are you going to ensure that our laundry facility, which we all pay for, has more than one working washing machine?
Thank you for your testimony.
Can I just say one more thing? None of us in this room can predict the future. We are still in the middle of a global pandemic, and none of us know what the economy is going to bring. But you, each and every one of you, know that if you pass this rent increase, you are making millions of New Yorkers more vulnerable for whatever is going to come. And that is wrong.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Joanna Wong, to be followed by Stephen Talbert Williams.
Hello? Okay. All right. Thank you for taking my testimony today. As a small housing provider, my first priority is to make sure that our housing is, number one, safe, and, number two, decent for our tenants, not just today, but for the future. Expenses have been ballooning, and with the high inflations, I doubt it's going to slow down. There's a concerning trend with insurance, especially with the older housing stock, which is normally rent-stabilized buildings. Many insurers are not renewing, or if they're renewing, they're renewing at great, you know, big increases and large deductibles. Large deductibles mean we need more cash on hand in case something happens. I was recently quoted a 25% premium increase, even though we have no history of any claims, and I was told that this is a terrific renewal. With expenses increasing across the board, the one thing we can do is delay nonessential items. Maybe we can squeeze a few more years out of the boiler. Maybe we can patch the roof instead of replace it, but all of this is short-term solutions. Postponed long enough, all these nonessential work items essentially turn into critical, urgent work. So since 2019, the R G B increases are now the only sustainable way to keep up with expenses. So please take that into consideration in your vote. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Talbert Williams. Our next speaker is Stephen Talbert Williams, to be followed by Anne Corchett.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Talbert Williams. My mother, Linda Paula Strager Williams, working as the Secretary for the New York Times. My mother, Linda Paula Strager Williams, working as the Secretary for the New York Times, moved into the community of PCVST in the early 70s. I was added to the lease as an occupant in 1986. I was, as claimed, legally evicted as a rent-controlled tenant, not as a rent-stabilized tenant, as evidenced in the Housing Court trial of S T. Owner LP versus Williams, where the owners filed the actual petition as myself being a rent-stabilized tenant. As claimed on the day of eviction, having never been provided a summons, my key card was disabled, my top lock was broken, and a marshal's notice was on the door saying that all property was removed and sent to auction. In the year 2000, my mother was diagnosed with ovarian cancer. She designated myself as sole beneficiary of her trust, the Linda Williams Beneficial Trust. In the year 1986, Tishman and Blackrock purchased the community of PCVST with tenants anticipating ownership of their apartments. They were given notices. The new owners increased rents, and my parents began living paycheck to paycheck, barely making ends meet. With the increase of MCI's, I witnessed many childhood friends evicted or moved. Prior to the Maiden Lane and Dill Auctions, the deed and lieu of foreclosure auctions...
Please speak into the mic a little bit more, please. Thank you.
It turned off for a second. Prior to the Maiden Lane and deed and lieu auctions, Tishman and Blackrock pursued legal action, excuse me, against the dizzing-off tenants of PCVST for fraud concerning rent stabilization and succession rights. After the tenants of the trial... Excuse me. After the tenants were found guilty of fraud, the owners performed financial, criminal, and medical background checks on all tenants.
Thank you for your testimony.
There's a lot more. I'll see you next time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
There was still 30 seconds left on the clock, right?
No, no, no. That was past the two minutes.
I could have sworn I saw 27 seconds.
It was two and a half, two and a half minutes. We gave you a little extra time.
Okay.
When the beeping starts, the first beep is, you have 30 seconds left, but when it repeat beeps, it's done.
Just to add on just a little bit, may I?
So there's all these people waiting for your testimony.
Defining MCI's for what you're doing for more increase in rents won't necessarily pursue a better outcome for what you need in life, for rent stabilization to actually to continue.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our next speaker, Anne Corchett.
Thank you so very much.
To be followed by Natalie Marquez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to share some numbers with you. First, inflation is 8.6%, a number we have not seen since 1981. D E P just announced a 4.9% increase in the water and sewer rates. It costs $2,500 more to heat the building this winter than last. My property tax bill is 7% higher than last year, which is an additional $6,000. Every skilled contractor and professional service provider I use has raised their rates. Prior to the pandemic, my attorney charged $450 an hour. It's now $520. My plumber has raised his hourly fee to $318 from $258. The labor and insurance rates are soaring for these people, and that means they're charging me more. But those are not the most alarming numbers for my family business. This is what keeps me most worried. We have a vacancy rate of 10%, and we don't have any cash to renovate those apartments and house more people. We've exhausted all of our reserves. Eighty years, that's how long my family has been at this. We've ridden out some pretty difficult times here in New York City, but this time it feels insurmountable. We understand that there's risk in running any business, but the regulatory and compliance obligations and the political winds that seem to want to legislate us out of business means that this board's deliberations are more important than ever. You have to base your decision on the numbers. It's evident that our expenses are increasing dramatically, and rents must rise to meet those expenses. We see ourselves as stakeholders in our neighborhood and the city. We are providing a needed service. We are supporting local contractors, many of them immigrants. Our inability to adequately improve and maintain our building impacts our renters, our contractors, our neighborhood, and the economic well-being of the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalia Marquez, to be followed by Edward Klein.
Hi, my name is Natalia Marquez. I am a New York City rent-stabilized tenant and a member of the Answer Coalition. 2.4 million New Yorkers, 2.4 million of us, that's how many rent-stabilized tenants there are in this city. Did 2.4 million of us vote on a rent increase? Did we vote for a 6% rent increase? Who decided that increase? Nine unelected members of the Rent Guidelines Board. Is that democracy? We rent-stabilized tenants, we're working class and poor people. 6% is the difference between a roof over our heads or sleeping on the streets. 6% is the difference between affording healthy food and not. We cannot afford a 6% increase. Landlords say that they need the money to provide repairs. Who here lives in an apartment with cockroaches? Who here lives in an apartment with rats with a leaky faucet? Repairs are a joke. Landlords say that they provide housing for us, but in reality, we give them money off of our hard-earned labor, and they hoard the housing. We demand a 0% rent increase during this pandemic. You know, this is what happens sometimes. 6% is a lot. 6% is life or death for some people, but sometimes the people that rule over us push too far. They ask for two months, too much from us, without understanding the mass movement of tenants that they will unleash if they pass the 6% increase. We're not just demanding zero increases. We're demanding housing as a human right for all people, and we will not stop until everyone has housing, not just in New York City, not just in the state, but in the entire country. I want to reiterate, we demand a 0% increase during this pandemic. The pandemic still is not over. Working-class tenants are still struggling, and we will always... Working class tenants are still struggling, and we will always be fighting for more.
Our next, our next speaker, our next speaker is Edward Klein, to be followed by Haley Kim. Welcome.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Did you get a copy of the spreadsheet that I gave out to everybody? I handed it out to everybody, if you could just take it out for a second? No, you didn't receive it? You did?
I think, I think they may have not come up here yet.
Oh, okay. Let me give you one.
Why don't you tell us about it?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I'm sorry you didn't get it yet. My name is Edward Klein. I have my own.
So, so let me just remind, let, let me just remind everyone that we will be sent out of this venue at some point tonight, and, and may result in people not being able to be heard. So my, my desire is to let everyone be heard, including all the people who are here, who are waiting for their turn. So if we want to let everyone be heard, we need, we need to make space for them. So, so Mr. Klein, could you continue, please?
Thank you.
And could everyone let him speak, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I respect democracy in action, you're, and I, 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 well, I don't agree with them necessarily. We do understand where they're coming from, and we do appreciate their concerns, and don't think anything otherwise. Anyway, my name is Edward Klein. I employ twenty-five people in this beautiful city of ours. I have the good fortune of being both a lawyer with my own law firm, and also a landlord. Maybe not such good fortune. Uh, the, the, the bottom line is, I've sent it out before you. I, I gave you an exhibit because I thought that that would be the best way of just showing exactly what's happened over the last few years. The exhibit shows the increase in rental rolls for probably most landlords in the city, and, and certainly myself, that since the H S T P A, for which you're not responsible for, was created in June twenty nineteen, our rents have not gone up much at all. Now, that's not just the fault of the H S T C P A, but it's also the fault of the de Blasio administration, who kind of dictated that there should be increases of point seventy-five percent per year. So in my average, it's increased by one point eight percent. That's exactly point nine, less than one percent, on each year going forward. And the expenses, as explained before, have gone up. You know, they don't give us any, uh, pity on taxes. The taxes during the de Blasio administration went up forty-eight percent. In the last two years alone, even though they gave us an eight percent break because of COVID, they took it all back, and they increased it by ten or twelve percent this year. So it's not, it's not really fair. The insurance costs, as you've heard, have, have increased by double digits in every single borough. Uh, the New York City mandates have caused us to have extra increases. So in a word, expenses continue rising at a great, much greater than the, than the income that's taken in. Again, uh, without disregard for the tenants that are here, noble tenants, good tenants, how much, how much of the blame can be laid at the feet of former mayor and the New York State legislatures? But you're the ones who are being called upon by all fair-minded individuals to try to fix the situation. And the answer is that, basically, again, having an, an, understanding what the tenants are doing and what the tenants want, but real estate at the core is balancing nicely. The, the balance, I have just another ten seconds. We didn't tell you that when you, when you went over thirty seconds. Anyway, anyway, I put up multiple tenants, I have just two more sentences. Thank you. I put up multiple tenants after Hurricane Sandy, and I did it for years, and we did it for free. We didn't charge up any rent. We started a group, just one more sentence, we started a group to give, uh, the Ukrainian refugees free rent, no rent, free rent, so that they could have a place where to go. That, that is not democracy. I'm finished. Respectfully, respectfully, please help reverse some of the damage done over the last couple of years, and vote, and vote for a six percent increase. Thank you very much for your courtesy and cooperation, and for opening the hearing. Have a wonderful day.
Our next speaker, our next speaker, our next speaker is Haley Kim, to be followed by Jared Cooperman. Haley Kim?
Good evening. My name is Haley Kim, and I work with an organization called Minquan Center for Community Action, representing many, many tenants in the Flushing Queens area. And in Flushing, there are two thousand six hundred and seventy-five buildings that are marked as rent stabilized. If the rent rises, the people living in those two thousand six hundred and seventy-five units are at risk. The housing situation in Flushing is already dire. Asian-American seniors in Flushing sleep in casino buses because they can no longer afford their apartments. One in four A P I senior lives in poverty. Raising the rent would only lead to more homelessness among an already vulnerable population. Prior to the eviction moratorium taking effect, there were three hundred eviction cases pending in Flushing. A rent hike would force more vulnerable seniors into unsafe living situations, where they would be exposed to both COVID and hate crimes. When tenants in New York pay typically fifty percent of their income for their rent, we cannot afford anything more than a rent freeze. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Cooperman, to be followed by Jenny Action.
I would like to give a few statistics today. Over the past eight years, the average one-year rent increase by the R G B was point seven five percent. Operating expenses increased by an average of three point five percent per year. Property taxes alone increased forty-eight percent over de Blasio. According to the R G B, this year's P I O C increased by four point two percent. These increases greatly affect my company. The buildings we manage are all rent stabilized. The R G B increases are the only way for us to properly maintain our buildings. This is due to the H S T P A that was passed in June twenty nineteen. We've been unable to use I A Is or M C I's to properly receive a return on our investment for most repairs made on our property. We also face new huge increases of the cost of doing business. Inflation is really hurting our bottom line. Even though you are concerned about tenants facing increases, these latest guidelines would not go into effect until after October twenty twenty-two, allowing tenants still impacted by the pandemic additional time to recover. Furthermore, any tenant who receives E R A P funds are further protected from any rent increase the next twelve months from the day that their building owner accepts the E R A P funds. Please do the math. How are owners supposed to provide adequate living conditions when the increase in operating expenses is many times higher than the increase in rents over the past eight years? How are owners expected to maintain their property when they are not permitted to make any money, even though the, and the R G B, which uses N O I to show their profit, does not include any mortgage expenses, which is not a way that building owners, uh, buy their property? Every single building owner has a mortgage expense. The N O I, which shows profit, does not show the mortgage. Please vote for a six percent increase for a one-year lease and an eight percent increase for a two-year lease. Thank you for listening, and thank you for making this hearing available to the public.
Our next speaker is Jenny, Jenny Action, to be followed by Aaron Weber.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Action. I'm a proud rent stabilized tenant of Ninety-Fourth Street in Jackson Heights. I'm also a tenant attorney working in the housing court, including the one right up the road, where I see tenants being faced with deplorable conditions and unjust evictions every day of the week. And I'm here to urge you, for myself, for my neighbors, and for my clients, to set aside this rent increase proposal and freeze the rent. As you know, you have one job today, and it's to assess the economic conditions of the real estate industry, the economic conditions of society, right, the real and current projected costs of living right now, and any other relevant data. And I just really feel like this year in particular, you got to pay attention to the third one, because right now, we have lost forty thousand five hundred people in this city to a pandemic. One in every two hundred children in the city lost a parent and an income earner in their household. The cost of inflation is high, but it's carried by all of us, and eleven percent of that is food, right? Food on the table that we are having to forego to pay your rent. There are currently two hundred and twenty-seven thousand evictions in the housing court. Two hundred thousand of them are for non-payment. There are over a million people in New York City who don't, who are either behind on a payment, or will be behind on a payment very soon, according to the U S Census Bureau. And when you looked at these conditions, you said, you know what the city needs? It needs the highest rent increase that we've had in almost a decade, and that is a moral outrage. It is a moral outrage. So this is shocking, it's embarrassing, it is not how New York City works. New York City is a city that comes together in times of emergency, is a city that comes together in times of crisis, and we need you to do the right thing now, and have the backs of the tenants in this city, who are paying your bills, we are paying for your repairs, we pay, and we pay, and we pay, and the conditions never get better. So we need to throw that mess away. We need to throw it away today, and we need to freeze the rent. Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Aaron Weber, to be followed by Claudia Nunez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Aaron. I own a family-run management company who manages thirty buildings across Manhattan and Brooklyn. Hey! During the de Blasio administration, rent regulated apartments on average, uh, rose under one percent for a typical one-year lease. These R G B rent increases are not commensurate with the rise in expenses associated with taxes, insurance, labor, and gas, oil. During the same period, over the last eight years, taxes increased sixty-one percent for a ten-unit building that I manage. Payroll expenses have also jumped for supers and administrators, as minimum wage in New York City increased eighty-eight percent from eight dollars an hour in twenty fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour in twenty twenty. For this same building, insurance premiums increased an average of eight point twelve percent per year over the last three years. But most of all, heating oil prices jumped seventy-seven percent in just two months. It cost six thousand dollars to fill up our oil tank in January twenty twenty-two. Just two months later, it costs ten thousand six hundred dollars to fill up the same tank, which needs two to three refills a month. In addition, during COVID, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, cleaning expenses rose forty percent. People talk about how the quality of living, living is inferior, but we, as property owners, need to cut costs for a building that needs an exterminator. With limited rent increases, property owners may not be able to afford an exterminator, not be, may, they might not be able to afford cleaning. Thank you.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Claudia Nunez, to be followed by Louis Barbenell.
La siguiente persona que va a hablar es Claudia Nunez, por favor, Claudia.
Ms. Nunez, before you start, I'd just like to remind everyone to please put your mask over your mouth and your nose. That's the way we protect each other. Thank you.
Senora Nunez, antes de usted empezar, quiero recordarles a todo el mundo tener la máscara por encima de la nariz y la boca. Esa es la forma que podemos proteger a todos. Gracias. Señora Nunez? Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Claudia Nunez, y vivo en los edificios de Cosmopolitan House. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Claudia Nunez, and I live at the Cosmopolitan Houses. Hoy estoy aquí para dejarle saber a todos ustedes los de la junta. I'm here to let everyone know, everyone that's over here on the board. El impacto tan enorme que vamos a tener con este incremento tan alto. The enormous impact that we will all have with this, with this incredible increase. Acabamos de salir de una pandemia. We just got out of a pandemic. Donde se perdieron trabajos. Where we lost jobs. Donde cantidad de familias no tienen para comer. Where many families don't have enough food. Mucho menos para pagar una renta. And much less money to pay rent. Yo soy una persona con un disability. Tengo un social security extremadamente bajo. Tengo a cargo a mis padres. I'm a person on, uh, with a disability. Uh, my social security is extremely low, and I have to move in with my parents. Nosotros en los edificios de Cosmopolitan hemos sido bombardeados por incremento de los M C I. Uh, the people in the Cosmopolitan Houses, we have been bombarded with M C I increases. Donde no tenemos por qué pagar estos, estas reparaciones que no nos corresponden a nosotros. Where we shouldn't have to pay for repairs that are not our responsibility. Donde el lándor de Cosmopolitan no nos quiere reparar nuestros apartamentos, donde están infectados de ratas, cucarachas. Where the landlords, the landlords of the Cosmopolitan houses do not want to, uh, provide repairs, where we live with rats, cockroaches, and bedbugs. Con este incremento esta renta, vamos a tener convertidos en homeless. With these rent increases, we're going to wind up homeless. Somos víctimas de los caseros, donde le estamos llenando sus bolsillos cada día más. We're victims of these landlords, whom we help fill their pockets every day. En las manos de todos ustedes estamos. Disculpe, señora, no le escucho. En las manos de todos ustedes estamos. We are in all of your hands. Ustedes van a ser recordados por este incremento tan injusto a nuestras viviendas. You are all going to be remembered for this unjust increase for our homes. Usted van a ser parte de la historia, donde más homeless van a ver en la ciudad de Nueva York. You are all going to be part of the, of history, uh, of a moment when, uh, uh, the amount of homeless people has, is, is astronomical. De qué parte están ustedes? De los caseros o de nosotros, los inquilinos que le estamos llenando sus bolsillos? A todos ellos. Whose side are you on? Of the tenants or of the landlords, who we are filling their pockets? Necesitamos que ustedes sensibilicen ante el dolor de todos los inquilinos que estamos hoy aquí peleando porque no haya un incremento más para nosotros. Muchas gracias. We need for you.
Our next speaker is.
Wait, wait, she didn't finish. We need for you to be sensitive to the pain of all the tenants that are here, that are fighting against these unjust landlords and these unjust increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next speaker, our next speaker is Louis Barbenell, to be followed by Basilio Garcia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify in front of the Rent Guidelines Board. We all understand how difficult it is to live in New York City. The cost of living is always extremely high, and the number one expense of most households is rent. At Barbary Rose, we manage a thousand apartments plus, and we have issues with all the buildings. I will echo, I will echo all the previous owners of property, that the core expenses are all up. As you heard, real estate taxes, water, sewer, insurance, supplies, labor, gas, oil, electricity, plus all the new laws that come out, just lead paint, mold, and gas lines. But it's interesting to note that there was a very interest, a very. But it's interesting to note that there was a very interesting book put out by Robert Fogelson regarding the Great Rent Wars of 1917 to 1929. Now, it was the first rent scheme in New York post-World War I, where you had a massive shortage of apartments and too much demand. Now, they found, interestingly enough, a lot of the similarities that go on today, and it ended in 1929 at the Great Panic, the Great Depression. Why? Because all of a sudden, you had too many apartments for too few people. What I find truly fascinating in New York is how we do believe, and it's becoming throughout the whole country, by controlling costs, we could actually control it. But it doesn't work that way. It didn't work that way in any communist country, and it doesn't work that way here. Also, what's fascinating is how President Biden put out a very interesting bulletin that he wants to improve housing and create more housing to reduce the cost. So there we have the White House, and providing, excuse me, suggesting supply and demand, whereas here in New York, we're still holding on to this ancient idea of holding on, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Can we give each person the opportunity to be heard, please? Thank you.
Señoras y señores, por favor, dejemos que todo el mundo hable. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the respect. I appreciate that. Supply and demand is the only way to actually allow price to come down. We appreciate if you could pass a 6% and an 8% increase. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Vasilio Garcia, to be followed by Irving Lee.
Vasilio Garcia, por favor. Adelante, caballero.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
A todos aquí presentes, especialmente...
Por favor, permitamos que todo el mundo tenga su tiempo.
Mi nombre es Vasilio Garcia, y vivo en uno de los edificios de BRG.
My name is Vasilio Garcia, and I live in one of the BRG buildings.
Muy buenas noches a la junta de vivienda.
Very good evening to the RGB.
Y este es mi testimonio.
And this is my testimony.
Tenemos entendido, tenemos entendido...
We understand.
...que van a aumentar el porcentaje de la renta que acordaron ustedes cuando se reunieron.
We understand that there's going to be a rent increase to the percentage that you all agreed to previously.
Que va a ser un 2% a 4.3% por el primer año.
It's going to be 4.3% for the first year.
Y a un 4.5% a un 9% en dos años.
And 4.5% to 9% within two years.
Ahora, ahora, si todavía el inquilino debe renta...
So now, if the tenant still owes any rent...
Este porcentaje...
This percentage...
...implicaría otro aumento en su renta.
This percentage would imply an additional increase to his or her rent.
Crearía...
This would create...
...un desalojo masivo que muchos de estos inquilinos terminarían en las calles.
This would create massive eviction, and many people would wind up on the streets.
Sabiendo el impacto que la pandemia del COVID les causó a todos...
Knowing full well the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic had on people...
Ya que muchos son de la tercera edad.
Since many people are elderly.
Esto es una bofetada y un abuso.
This is a slap, and it's also an abuse.
Hacia nuestros inquilinos.
To all of our tenants.
Que dejarían de comer.
It would be a slap in the face to people who would not be able to eat...
...para pagar su renta.
...to be able to pay rents.
Ya que sus ingresos que obtenemos, que tienen del seguro social, son limitados...
Since their income that they receive from social security, income is also extremely limited.
Y a la misma vez...
And at the same time...
...nos ayudaría, no nos ayudaría a cubrir nuestras necesidades básicas.
It would not help us to cover our basic costs.
Todos los inquilinos les hacemos un llamado...
We ask all tenants to please...
...a la junta de vivienda.
We ask all tenants to please reach out to the RGB.
Que piensen antes de tomar una decisión injusta.
We ask you to please make sure to think before you make an unjust decision.
Para así poder llegar a un acuerdo justo...
To be able to arrive at a very fair agreement.
...donde seamos beneficiados de una justicia digna.
Where we will be granted justice.
Que nos beneficies a todos y no a los cabilderos, que amasan fortuna sin importarles el dolor de los demás vulnerables.
And that it benefit us, and not just those who are out there lobbying and don't care about us, the downtrodden.
Porque de no ser así...
If not for this...
...es la manera como los vamos a recordar si no hacen las cosas justas cuando les llegue el día.
This is what we will remember you by, by not making good on this and being fair. This is how we will remember you.
Muchas gracias, y espero que creen conciencia en sus corazones para que esto sea justo para todos por igual.
Thank you so very much, and I hope that you're aware of this, and you think about this, and that you think of this in your hearts, so that...
Principalmente por los inquilinos que están atravesando un trago amargo con este abuso que están cometiendo, y ustedes lo saben.
Especially because of all the tenants at the moment who are going through this very difficult time and have had a bitter taste as a result of this, and all of you know this.
Esto no se puede tolerar más.
We can no longer tolerate this.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Irving Lee, to be followed by Consuela Angulo.
My name is Irving Lee. I'm a single, I'm a second-generation property owner in Chinatown of a senior tenant building. And as an Asian-American property owner, like many others, form the foundational basis for making Chinatown a true ethnic community. Many of our tenants live in rent-regulated apartments, with some paying rents below the cost of actually maintaining the apartment. I have SCREE and Section 8 tenants who are protected from rent increases. We have many mama-pop stores and restaurants, often below market rate for commercial businesses in New York City. Even before the COVID outbreak, the advent of online shopping has put many of our stores out of business. This, along with the laws like 2019 HSTPA, restrict our ability to renovate vacant rent-regulated apartments, further reducing our income. With COVID, businesses in New York City suffer, and so went under. On top of this, a campaign for canceled rent was initiated undermining small property owners as if we were responsible for COVID. Now, inflation has made things more difficult and expensive. As price of operating costs have increased 4.2%, with many of our buildings are over 100 years old, capital improvements are unavoidable, and costs have increased tremendously. This includes mandates for lead paint and mold remediation. As private property owners, we have to be accountable on how our housing is maintained. Our government relies on us to pay taxes, which subsidizes the city in order to function properly. Under de Blasio administration, average rent increases for one year was 0.75%, while operating expenses in that period rose 3.5%. My property taxes have increased 20% for this year. My expenses up 32%, while my income has declined 21%. In order to maintain the affordable regulated housing, we need a substantial increase to cover our expenses that enable to keep Chinatown Chinatown.
Thank you for your testimony.
We need this to preserve responsible businesses like myself, which is in the interest of the city and my tenants. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Consuela Angulo, to be followed by David Eschegoff.
La siguiente persona que va a hablar, la señora Consuelo Angulo, por favor. Señora Consuelo. Por aquí, señora. Here we are. We're not leaving. Señora Consuelo, le van a mover el micrófono. Un momento.
Sí, que me lo pongan bonito. Muy buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Consuelo Angulo.
My name is Consuelo Angulo.
Para mí, este momento es un momento muy especial.
For me, this is a very, this moment is a very special moment.
Porque es la única manera de hacer sentir toda la problemática que estamos viviendo con la vivienda.
Because it's the only way to make you feel the problems that we are feeling with this, with housing.
Y que ya llegamos a un momento de que como cuando el corazón ya va a explotar.
And we have arrived at a moment where it feels as if your heart is going to explode.
Y dice, basta.
And enough.
Ya no se aguanta más.
We can't tolerate anymore.
La pandemia se llevó los pulmones.
The pandemic took away the lungs.
Y lo que quedó se lo están comiendo.
And what...
Los dueños de casa, los ricos, que están haciendo de las suyas.
And what's left over are being basically eaten, eaten up by the landlords, by the rich. They're just doing what they want with what's left over.
Yo soy una mujer con 69 años.
I am a 69-year-old woman.
Vivo con un, con una pequeña ayuda del social security.
I live with a little bit of help from my social security.
No tengo una vivienda digna.
I don't have a dignified...
No puedo dormir como persona, porque no se puede, señores.
I can't sleep like a person because it just can't happen...
Dos minutos es poco para lo que se tiene que decir.
Two minutes...
Lo único que se le puede decir es...
Two, two, un momento, señora. Two minutes is too short of a time to truly say what we want to say.
Lo único que yo les puedo decir es a ustedes como representantes de los más pobres y vulnerables como somos, los de la tercera edad, como somos la gente que no tenemos ni fuerza ya para vivir, porque ya todas las fuerzas ya acabó.
The only thing that I can tell you, who are representatives of the truly poor and impoverished and the most vulnerable of society, which are us, which are people that are elderly, and we just don't have the strength to live like this anymore.
Tomen un poquito de conciencia y pónganse la mano en el corazón y diga, "Estas personas también tienen derecho a vivir como persona, a dormir dignamente." Y ustedes, y ustedes duermen con esa satisfacción que han ayudado a unos pobres, a la gente por lo menos que duerma y no se les coman los pies, las ratas, ni las cucarachas. Estén encima de los seres humanos, señores. Muchas gracias y...
Liz, please, please finish the testimony.
So, I'm only, the only thing that I have to say is, I hope you look in your conscience and put your hands over your hearts, and you say, you attempt to do the right thing by these people, which are the vulnerable people, the poor people. You help these people who every night have to sleep with rats feasting on their feet or cockroaches. Do the right thing.
Our next speaker is David Eschegoff, to be followed by Sandra Dominguez.
Good evening. Please don't be on the side of the owners or the tenants. Be on the side of the numbers. It is my opinion that the board...
Allow each speaker the courtesy of being able to be heard. Please continue.
It is my opinion that the board must focus on the mandate in making sure that rent-stabilized buildings like mine can continue to operate in a safe and presentable manner. To do that, rent adjustments must keep up with costs. Unfortunately, the proposed range in the preliminary vote will not do that. Increases over the past seven to eight years have been relatively flat, while expenses have drastically increased. For example, my real estate taxes have nearly doubled in the past five years, and our insurance rates and fuel bills have skyrocketed. Our fuel bill has more than tripled to almost $6 per gallon. Our building with 22 units, two of which are fair market, with a $325,000 gross rent consumes about 15 gallons, 15,000 gallons of oil per year. That is $90,000 before any vacancies, taxes, which is another $84,000, insurance, basic repairs, exterminator, payroll, just to name a few. No, I'm not. I'm not. I have taken $100,000 out of my account to subsidize that building.
Mr. Eschegoff, this is an opportunity to testify.
The ma, so, so tell them to quiet. Tell them to stop.
All right, please, let's, let's allow each speaker to testify to the board, please. Thank you.
The May 2022 CPI index was published to be 8.6%. How can anyone square a 2% to 4% increase when we're facing 8.6% and rising? Inflation affects everyone, including property owners. Property owners are a large consumer, and this increase affects us even more. New York City politicians and policies cannot continue this charade and subsidize the general public on the backs of a few. If they want a diverse group of people in the city, they should do so by subsidizing the rent rather than asking for property owners to do so, while being taxed into bankruptcy. There's no question that COVID-19 caused havoc throughout the public. Property owners are a member of the same communities, and while everyone has been subsidized, we're still in charge of making sure the buildings were operating clean and safe for our residents and employees, all of which can...
Thank you for your testimony.
...came at a significant cost.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is... I'd just like to remind everybody of two things. One is that registration closes at 8:00 p.m., so if you want to speak and you have not yet signed up, please go to the RGB staff desk in the front to sign up. And also, again, just a reminder, please cover your mouth and your nose to protect each of us. That's why we wear masks. So if you're not wearing your mask, please cover your mouth and your nose. Thank you.
Señoras y señores, dos mensajes rapidito acá. Recuerden, por favor, que si quieren declarar esta noche, tienen que inscribirse en la mesa de inscripción. A las 8 de la noche, a más tardar, y dos, por favor, les urgimos que sigan, por favor, utilizando la máscara adecuadamente, tapando la boca y la nariz, por favor. Gracias.
Our next speaker is Sandra Dominguez, to be followed by Glenda Suazo.
La próxima declarante es la señora Sandra Dominguez. Señora Dominguez, pasa adelante, por favor.
Muy buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Sandra Dominguez.
My name is Sandra Dominguez.
Inquilina de los edificios de Cosmopolitan Houses en el sector de Woodside.
I also live at the Cosmopolitan Houses in Woodside, Queens.
Vivimos en estos edificios por muchos años. Mis hijos de 19 y 20 años.
I've been living in these apartments for a very long time, myself and my two children, both 19 and 20 years of age.
Sobrevivimos con el limitado ingreso de mi esposo, ya que la pandemia del COVID-19 afectó drásticamente mi hogar.
We live on a very limited income, which is my husband's, since COVID affected our home greatly.
Reduciendo el ingreso familiar, limitando toda nuestra vida cotidiana.
It reduced our family income, and it also has affected our day-to-day living.
Donde al igual que miles de familias en Nueva York, debemos decidir si poner pan en nuestra mesa o cumplir las demandas inhumanas.
And just like thousands of families in New York, we have to decide whether to put bread on the table or to submit to these unfair demands that are being made of us.
De los insensibles caseros que demandan año tras año, incrementos que ya no podemos... De los insensibles caseros que demandan año tras año incrementos que ya no podemos pagar.
With these landlords that are insisting every single year to continue raising the rent and providing these rent increases.
Durante este tiempo he sido víctima de mi casero, quien se ha negado a cumplir con sus obligaciones.
During this time, I've been the victim of my landlord who's denied to make any of the, or make good on any of his obligations as a landlord.
Negándome reparaciones que son mi derecho.
Denying repairs that are my right as a tenant.
Vivimos bajo una infestación de ratas en estos edificios con chinches, cucarachas.
We live with an infest, with different infestations in these buildings. There are bedbugs, there are roaches.
En condiciones no aceptables, pero aún durante estos tiempos difíciles de pandemia donde perdimos todo, tanto la varicia de mi casero no se detiene.
During these times where we lost so much because of this pandemic, but of course, my landlord's greed doesn't stop.
Y tomando ventaja de los huecos en la ley.
And of course...
Y un sistema de vivienda que trabaja a favor de los caseros.
And of course, taking advantage of all the loopholes in the system and a housing authority and a housing system that of course favors the landlords.
Solamente sigue incrementando mi renta.
He keeps increasing my rent.
Con más aumentos, uno que está a punto de que ustedes, señores, quieran aprobar hasta dónde nos quieren llevar.
And of course, one more increase that of course all of you on the board are at the point of making at the moment, one more increase.
Poniendo por el lado los MCI, que ya los tengo encima también, tres MCI, señores.
That's of course not taking into consideration all of the MCI's that have been applied. There are three of them, ladies and gentlemen, three.
Que no solo son responsables de la pérdida de vivienda bajo costo.
You are not only responsible for the loss of housing in the city.
Sino también de desalojos masivos.
But of course, massive evictions.
Ahora les pregunto.
Now I ask all of you.
Una oleada de desalojos masivos causaría...
What would massive evictions cause, cause in the city?
Un problema de orden público, señores.
It would be a public order issue, ladies and gentlemen. I beg of you.
A ustedes para que paren estos aumentos tan injustos a la población.
To please put a stop to these unfair increases to the population.
A la población pobre, hasta cuándo?
To the poor of the city. Till when are we going to continue doing this?
Siendo atacados por los dueños de edificios hasta dónde le seguirán ayudando con su varicia.
Where are we going to stop helping all of these greedy landlords? Where are we finally going to put a stop to all of this?
De qué lado están ustedes?
What side exactly are all of you on?
¿Por qué debemos seguir mendigando por justicia?
Why should we keep asking for crumbs and justice?
¿Por qué cerrar los ojos ante el dolor humano?
Why close your eyes before all of the pain in the city? Please, put an end to this.
De injusticia, basta de abusos, basta de llorar impotencias.
Enough, enough. Stop the helplessness.
Mientras los caseros llenan los bolsillos a causa de nuestra hambre y miseria.
While landlords continue lining their pockets with, uh, with our money.
No queremos incremento mientras dure la pandemia. No queremos vivir en la calle. Queremos justicia. No hambre, no incremento, no desalojo.
We don't want to... We want justice. We don't want to live on the street. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Glenda Suazo, to be followed by Andrew Sacalof Diaz. Glenda. Welcome, Ms. Suazo.
Okay, la próxima persona es la señora Glenda Suazo. Señora.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good.
Este es mi testimonio.
Uh, good, good afternoon to everyone. This is my statement.
Creo que no debería haber un momento de renta.
We don't want a rent increase?
Por diez años he sido acosada por el casero y el superintendente del edificio.
For ten years, I have been harassed by my landlord and the super of the building.
Ah, por no hacer reparaciones en mi apartamento.
Uh, he has not done repairs in my apartment.
El super me acosa haciendo, ah, ruidos excesivos, poniendo música fuerte en el sótano del edificio.
The super harasses me by putting on excessively loud music in the basement of the building.
Tomando y fumando.
Drinking and smoking.
Él y sus familiares cuando él no está en el, en el edificio también, ellos lo hacen.
He and his relatives, even when he is not in the building, they do that.
Todo este acoso me hace, me ha afectado en todo.
All of this harassment has affected me in, in all levels.
Físicamente e, en financieramente.
Physically and financially.
Porque he tenido que ir a trabajar sin poder dormir, porque el super me ha mantenido despierta una noche anterior, porque él está tomando en el, en el sótano del edificio con música fuerte.
I have had to go to work, uh, the next day while I did not sleep the night before because I have been up due to the super's excessively loud music and partying with the drinking and the smoking.
Desde octubre del dos mil veintiuno, no hay gas en el edificio.
Since October of the year 2021, there has not been gas in the building.
No tenemos ninguna explicación del dueño del casero.
We have no explanation from the landlord or the super.
Según los vecinos es que si el landlord, uh, instala otra vez el servicio de gas, el edificio va a explotar.
According to the landlord and the super, if the landlord reinstalls the gas service, the building will explode.
El dueño, el casero, les provió estufa eléctrica a todos los inquilinos excepto a mí.
The owner slash landlord provided electric stoves to all the tenants except for myself.
¿Creen ustedes, señores, que es justo que haya un incremento de renta?
Sir, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, do you think it's fair to increase the rent? No.
Y todavía sigue mi testimonio que no pararía de, de contar todo lo que he estado viviendo acerca del acoso y malas reparaciones de mi casero.
My statement would continue and I would just give more examples of the harassment that I have, um, been dealing with from my super and my landlord.
Debido a los liqueos, mi hija una vez se deslizó, se resbaló del, toda el agua que había en la cocina.
One time there was such a big leak in my kitchen that my daughter slipped or slid all the way because of the water.
Aquí está una foto de afuera de mi vecino, un techo, pequeño techo.
Uh, this is a picture of my next door neighbor. It's a small roof, small ceiling?
Siempre está dañado y liquea dentro de mi apartamento.
It is always damaged and it leaks into my apartment.
Todo esto me ha creado, afect, afectado físicamente en mi salud también, porque también hay mol en mi, en mi apartamento.
All of this has also affected my health physically because there is mold in my apartment.
Y mi casero solo sigue colectando renta y colectando renta y no repara más el acoso, que ahora no es solo el acoso, son amenazas también.
And all my landlord does is continue collecting rent and collecting rent without making any repairs, but does continue to harass me, um, constantly.
Thank you for your testimony.
Señora, muchas gracias por su testimonio. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Sacalof Diaz, to be followed by Alexandra Nita. Andrew Sacalof Diaz, to be followed by Alexandra Nita.
Gracias. Uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Andrew Sacalof Diaz. I'm the co-founder and co-president of the Eighty-Ninth Street Tenants Unidos Association here in Jackson Heights, Queens. I thank you very much for the privilege to speak tonight, um, as well as your time, all nine of you who are here listening to us and are pleased for no, uh, on behalf of five hundred tenants, two hundred households, families and children and seniors. We strongly urge the Rent Guidelines Board to vote no and to vote for working families, to vote for your neighbors and reject any rent increases on the back of renters at a time when we're just barely coming out of this pandemic and more personally, at a time when me and my neighbors all lost everything last year in an eight-alarm fire in Jackson Heights, when our two buildings burned and destroyed everything. We lost everything we owned, we've never gone back home, and we remain displaced to this day. I have a one-year-old at home who's sick and it's so important to me to be here tonight to just amplify the voice of our neighbors, the voice of working people who can't be here in this room to tell you how hard it would be to give a rent increase of six percent to real estate industry who prospects with vacant apartments by the thousands across the city when we're hurting here, when I have neighbors who still live in hotels just a mile away down here in South Jamaica. We're advocating and we're working to get back home. It is our, our rent stabilized rights, thank God, to the H C R, that we can go back once our buildings are fixed. And unfortunately, but by the grace of God, this is our only asset left. We've lost everything, but we have a legal right to return to these rent stabilized units. However, in a twisted and cruel strategy by Revny and the real estate industry pushing this through, this latest increase means the difference between our seniors who are trying to get back to these buildings to be able to survive, to be able to choose between food on the table, like everyone else here has spoken tonight about. We can't do it. Our seniors can't survive. Scre eligibility is not accessible. I know I'm going over, but every single member of this board, you know that we are counting on you to stand for us when our own representatives in Albany and in Washington continue to fail us day by day. They've done nothing. Please vote no. Vote for us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alexandra Nita, to be followed by Emily Breeze.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Nita. I live in a one-bedroom, one-bathroom rent stabilized apartment with a relative in Queens. I watched her struggle to find work long after her unemployment benefits disappeared and I've seen how my neighbors struggle, especially families robbed of generational wealth by racist housing policies, displaced by gentrification, and impacted by the still ongoing global pandemic. I could give a thousand reasons why raising rents is cruel and senseless, but I want to take the little time I have to let every tenant in the room know that we deserve better. And I want officials to know that a reckoning is coming to this system where housing is treated as a luxury and a business instead of as a human right, where landlords are at best unnecessary middlemen and at worst parasites on the working class. That reckoning looks like the Good Cause Eviction Bill. It looks like a rent freeze. It looks like community organizing and if delayed long enough, it could even look like mass rent strikes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Breeze, to be followed by Louis Cathmer.
My name is Emily Breeze and I'm a rent-controlled tenant and I'm also with the Answer Coalition. During the pandemic, when rents are higher than they've ever been before, we as tenants demand that you do not raise rent. In N Y C, one of the richest countries in the world, excuse me, richest cities in one of the richest countries in the world, there are over eighteen thousand children who do not have a roof over their heads. There are over eighty thousand people that are homeless in this city. Did you catch that? Eighty thousand. But despite that, there are three empty apartments for every one homeless person. While children sleep on the street and in shelters, there are empty homes. There is not a housing crisis in this country. There's a housing affordability crisis in this country. And why, why are the rents so high? Because the city government and the developers work hand in hand at the expense of the working-class communities, most particularly black and brown communities. Again, we have empty homes, empty apartments, while homeless people sleep right in front of them. It is the city's obligation, it is your obligation to provide affordable housing for people, but instead of that, you want to raise the rent? You want to raise the rent to add thousands more to the street? So you can worry about their profits? We're worried about our homes. But I say this to my fellow tenants here. We know the source of our power. We are the source of the power. Sixty-eight percent of New Yorkers are renters. Two point four million are rent stabilized. Compared to nine unelected members of this body who think that they can decide our fate. We decide our fate, but we can't do it alone. We can't do it alone. We have to fight together, united as tenants. We will win because housing is a human right and we will fight, fight, fight!
Our next speaker is Louis Cathmer, to be followed by Adam Wilks. Louis Cathmer, please.
Yes, my name is Louis Cathmer. I'm a rent stabilized tenant who lives in Brooklyn. I've worked as a volunteer on Met Council on Housing's Tenants Rights Hotline since 2019. I'm here to tell you what I hear every week from callers all over the city. Make no mistake, there is an eviction crisis underway. People are struggling to stay in their homes even at current rent levels. The volume of calls we receive has increased significantly in the last few months, about forty-five percent over our normal call volumes, uh, just before the, the latest eviction moratorium expired. And many more of the calls we receive are about pending evictions than before. Evictions are up at least forty percent over the same period. We hear from tenants every day whose savings were completely depleted during the pandemic and many others went deeply into debt. Many of our callers' jobs have not returned and these are not isolated cases. These are now bread and butter calls. We have not recovered financially from the pandemic. An increase in rent now would be the straw that breaks the camel's back. I recently spoke with a caller who's been threatened with eviction. Even though she received an E-RAP reward that was supposed to cover her back rent, it wasn't enough. Her primary concern right now is keeping herself and her young child from becoming homeless. When I mentioned to her the R G B is considering a significant rent increase, she was stunned. She thought I had misspoke. Surely I meant to say rent reduction, right? Incomes haven't gone up, but everything else has. Debt, food prices, energy costs, education, healthcare, daycare costs, all up. And now rent might go up too? I could hear the stress resignation in her voice, knowing that once again, government might fail her. I truly fear the impacts that a rent increase will have on her physical and mental well-being and many others. Please, open your hearts and eyes to what is going on in the city. We need a rent reduction, not an increase. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adam Wilks. Adam Wilks, to be followed by Esther Garcia Luna.
So, of the nine of you, who's giving twenty grand to Eric Adams? A plate. Fifty grand to Kathy Hochul. How much money?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're gonna ask you to put your mask on. This is to protect all of us. Thank you.
My bad, my bad. Okay. Uh, my name's Adam Wilks. I'm a renter in Jackson Heights. My landlord, Daniel Benedict, owns a dozen buildings, making billions in passive income while he lounges at his Port Washington mansion. I saw one of you, I saw the lady on the left here, Ms. Smith, poaching, uh, some of the landlords earlier. They pay you guys a lot of money to get, to give Hochul a lot of money to get onto boards like this. Then you do your economic bidding and it's, it's economic. It's cold as calculating, but let me say this.
Please, please put your mask on. Thank you.
Sorry, let me say this. Um, with this inflation, right? Grocery market, gas prices and car insurance, health insurance, life is more expensive than ever. This is a hot economy and I know the landlords pin their rationale on a hot economy, but what are you gonna do? There's millions of people in the city who rent and so many of them are struggling, so many of them. We're just getting out of COVID. And you can, and if you want to make an economic decision, a utilitarian decision, help them. Don't help the bottom line of the landlords, because every time they say, oh, prices are going up, prices are going up, it's their bottom line, but they're, they're in Long Island, they're in Westchester. Like, I, that's where I send my rent to. They're not living in the buildings. They're not, they're not doing work. I mean, I, I lived, I lived with a small gentle, I lived with the gentleman who, um, who I paid rent to, but he was a small-time landlord. Like, that is not the people who pay, who pay for you to influence the politicians and everything. It's the big fish, like, like Daniel Benedict and BlackRock. Your public service, right? If you're worried about some big gap between rent stabilized and unregulated, um, I think that's a good thing. People will know that rent stabilized apartments are better than the market apartments. That's a good thing. All real estate should be regulated. It's, it, maybe you want to make it easier for an actual small-time landlord, but we're talking about big... big fish, we're talking about the profitability, the profit bottom line of these giant corporations, and you should not put them ahead of the well-being of millions of people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Esther Garcia Luna to be followed by Everardo Aguilar.
Good evening. Every landlord who has come up here today has asked you to look at the statistics, to look at the numbers. I asked you to look at our numbers. I asked you to look at how many of us have been unemployed since the beginning of the pandemic? How many of us lost family members and are living on one income or no income at all? How many of us have been unemployed this time? This young lady over here talked about that three-to-one ratio. Do you think people are on the streets because they want to be? No. They're on the streets because these apartments are unaffordable, they're unlivable. These apartments are not in the kind of conditions for you to be charging us this much rent. I ask you to look at how many of us are immigrant families. How many of us have to support families in the US and outside of the US as well? I live in a fifth-floor apartment with no elevator, mind you. And every time a big truck passes by on the street, bits of the windowsill crumble down. They like, literally, I could be just sitting on the couch, and you can hear cracking sounds, crumbling noises from the walls. It sounds like the building is going to fall down. And you want to raise 6% on our rent? That is not okay. I speak for my family and all other families who just don't know how to communicate. I know that a lot of families live with mold, live with rats, who live with pests, and just so many things that we can't control. It's out of our control. We don't live like this because we want to, but you could at least make it a little easier for us to live. Please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Everardo Aguilar to be followed by Guillermo Zapata.
Buenas tardes, señoras y señores. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Everardo Aguilar. I just wanted to say that deep down in my heart, I believe that this is not the appropriate time. We want you to take the time to think and to concentrate on the fact that many of us have lost loved ones, have lost people. Many children have lost their parents. And of course, now the fact that there are no jobs, that means that salaries can't go up, there are no jobs to be had. And of course, landlords are lining their pockets. Even though the state and city governments have helped out landlords. So that of course, they can defray their costs. Our homes are unlivable. This is not the time to do that. We don't even have ramps available for children who might require wheelchair access. They want to make all sorts of repairs to ceilings. They make all types of repairs to ceilings and rooftops. There's vermin everywhere in our apartments, in our building, and it's just impossible And truthfully speaking, there is no money. There is no money to be had to be able to afford rent increases at this moment. Thank you so very much.
Our next speaker is Guillermo Zapata to be followed by Angelica Perea.
Buenas noches para todos. Good evening to all. My name is Guillermo Zapata. I'm retired. I make around $900 a month. I'm paying a monthly rent bill of $700. Which leaves me with less than $200 a month. To be able to pay for groceries. And of course, if I have to pay for transportation if I want to go anywhere. So of course, that means that if rent prices go up... I don't know what I would have to do. Perhaps I'll have to go to a shelter. I know that it's not a problem for many, but for many of us, it is, and many of us are in this predicament at the moment. Thank you very much, and please forgive me for speaking so low.
I'm sorry, before the next speaker speaks, can we just double-check the mic to make sure it's doing what it needs to do?
Yeah. Contact with nothing, because I think the battery's not enough.
Okay, so let's just wait, wait a second. Let's take care of that.
Hello, 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 hello? You can hear me?
Yeah, I think maybe just people need to be close to it.
Hello, hello, hello?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Angelica Perea.
My name is Angelica Perea.
Soy inquilina en un edificio por 31 años.
I've been living as a tenant in a building now for 31 years.
Aquí en la comunidad de Queens.
Here in the community of Queens.
Yo estoy viniendo acá a dar mi testimonio.
I wanted to come before you to offer my testimony.
Porque me estoy viendo afectada en estas circunstancias por el alza de la renta.
Because of course, I'm being heavily affected by this rent increase.
Yo, en los 31 años que vivo en este edificio...
In the 31 years I've been living at this building.
Siempre he sido una buena inquilina.
I've always been a very good tenant.
A pesar de que los servicios no son los mejores en el edificio...
Despite the fact that the services or amenities in the building, of course, are not the best.
Me estoy dando cuenta que en realidad sufrimos los mismos problemas que tenemos la mayoría de los edificios, que no nos dan buen servicio.
And of course, I've come to terms with the fact that not just us, but many people have the same issue with not getting the best service in our buildings.
Tengo un apartamento muy pequeño, con una sola habitación.
I have a one-bedroom apartment that's very small.
Por los 31 años que vivo, estoy pagando más de mil dólares.
And for the 31 years I've been living there, I'm now paying more than $1,000.
Y yo recibo de mi jubilación solamente 700 dólares.
And I receive $700 a month for retirement.
Si para los jóvenes es bien difícil conseguir un trabajo...
If for today's youth, it's difficult to be able to find a job.
Para mí se me está haciendo mucho más difícil poder completar la diferencia de la renta que yo tengo que pagar.
For me, it's even more difficult to be able to cover the difference of the rent that I have to foot every month.
Créanme, por favor, créanme que yo estoy viviendo momentos difíciles pensando lo que va a ser en el futuro para poder cumplir como siempre he hecho con mi renta.
Please, please know that it's becoming increasingly more difficult for me to be able to pay the rent on a monthly basis, and I'm now thinking about what's going to come.
Yo lo que le pido a todos, por favor, que tomen mucha consideración en los niños, en todas las personas adultas que estamos pasando momentos tan difíciles después de esta pandemia.
I ask you to please consider all of the elderly, all of the children that are going through such a difficult time during this precarious moment.
Muchísimas gracias, y por favor, siempre acuérdense de todos. Esta es una rueda, el mundo es una rueda. Hoy estamos aquí, mañana estamos arriba, abajo, y vamos yendo por el camino. Por favor, siempre tomen en consideración a las personas que estamos necesitando, que somos de buen vivir.
Thank you so very much for everything, and please remember, take stock of the fact that today you might be in a position of power, but you never know where you will be tomorrow. It's like the Wheel of Fortune.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. So while you're fixing the battery, thank you, Liz. I'm gonna say our next speaker is gonna be Amy Collado, or Collado, is that right? And then we're gonna take a break after that. Just a few...
Nuestra próxima declarante será la señorita Amy Collado, y después vamos a tomar una pausa después de esto.
All right, please, please, this is, we're here to hear testimony.
You have to be awake to hear the testimony.
Okay, all right. Please, let's get the microphone ready.
Hello, hello? Is this better? Is this better? A lot better? Okay.
And now we're gonna hear from Amy Collado. Welcome.
I'm sorry, just please don't touch the top part of it. Try not to, because it's not you, everybody. Señores, por favor, traten de no tocar el micrófono arriba, porque creo que ahí se apaga, entonces para evitar esto. Gracias.
Thank you so much for your work. Okay, so I actually wrote a very long, long testimony before coming here, and even added some stuff because of what the landlords were saying. I decided not to do that, and instead, I'd actually like to start off with saying that this hearing is rigged. How? There's supposed to be two landlord reps. From what I've seen in the six years that I've organized, there are more landlord reps on this stage that are posing as public members. Okay? So, we know that Alex Schwartz has actually never or hardly ever voted in favor of any of the votes that the tenant side have ever proposed. And we also know that, well, David Reese actually is a professor, right? A professor of law and research director at the Center for Urban Business Entrepreneurship, right? He's even an author of a book called Paying for the American Dream: How to Reform the Market for Mortgages, right? What I wanted to just share is, your scholarship focuses on secondary mortgage markets, right? Predatory lending and housing policy. You know everything that we're saying is true. You know very well, Mr. Reese, of all these numbers, all these testimonies that people are giving, you're seeing the faces of these numbers, right? And what I find interesting is that since you've taken position, you've slowly figured out how to increase the rents, right? You also work very closely with landlords, because you work with attorneys for real estate. So your business is people's homes, okay? So I'm gonna ask you, since I have seven minutes, seven seconds left, I'm gonna ask you for you to use your white, male, privileged, and highly educated, and very connected upbringing to reverse your increases and do what's right. You don't need to hear from anyone else in the room, because you are an expert. Please vote for a rent freeze, because in reality, you know everything they've been saying is bullshit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. So, so we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a 15-minute break? And let me just remind you, if you would like to sign up to testify, you have till 8 o'clock to testify, to sign up to testify. If you don't sign up before 8 o'clock, you will not be given the opportunity to testify. So please make sure to sign up at the front booth. So we'll be back at 7:35.
Señores, si usted quisiera hablar o declarar, por favor, inscríbase en la mesa de afuera si no lo ha hecho ya, y volvemos a las 7:35. Vamos a tomar un descansito, volvemos a las 7:35. Muchas gracias. Y se tiene hasta las 8 de la noche para inscribirse a hablar. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Y se tiene hasta las ocho de la noche para, eh, inscribirse a hablar. Gracias.
Bienvenidos de nuevo. Vamos a terminar el resto del escenario. Y solo dos recordaciones. Creo que la gente ha sido muy buenas con sus máscaras, pero ni siquiera veo a nadie con sus máscaras, ni siquiera encendidas. Pero recuerden que mantengan su máscara sobre su boca y su nariz para proteger a todos. Y inscribanse. Termina en menos de 15 minutos. Entonces, si aún no se han inscrito y quieren hablar, hablen con el personal del RGV en la parte de frente del espacio y podrán entrar.
Entonces señores, unos mensajitos antes de empezar. Todo el mundo ha hecho buen trabajo con las máscaras, pero por favor, de nuevo, manténgase la máscara puesta y que la máscara cubra la nariz y la boca para protegernos a todos. Y el segundo mensajito es que si quisieran hablar y no se han inscrito, no se han registrado para hablar, ustedes tienen menos de 15 minutos hasta que ya terminemos para ir a la mesa de enfrente a inscribirse si quisieran decir algo, testificar o declarar. Muchas gracias.
Y solo una última cosa. Si ustedes se han inscrito, pero no se han llamado, por favor, inscribanse en la mesa de enfrente porque creemos que llamamos a todas las personas que se han inscrito. Bien. Así que veo que una persona está levantando la mano. ¿Podrían solo inscribirse? ¿Cuántas personas? Se han inscrito. ¿Podrían solo decir sus nombres?
Están revisando los nombres. Si usted ya...
Sí, lo tenemos.
Si usted ya se inscribió, ya se registró y no lo hemos llamado, por favor, verifique con la señora que está sentada en la mesa de enfrente a verificar que ella tiene el nombre suyo.
Sí, y también lo tenemos. Gracias. Estábamos refiriéndonos a las personas que se inscribieron antes de venir aquí hoy día. Decía ayer o ante él. Bien. Vamos a empezar de nuevo con el testimonio. El siguiente orador es Keisha Clark, seguido por Nelson Sierra.
Chicos, estoy tratando de hablar tan rápido como puedo porque tengo mucho...
Lo siento, solo diga directamente al micrófono.
Estoy tratando de hablar tan rápido porque tengo mucho que decir, así que por favor espere conmigo. Vivo en un edificio de Zara que parece vivir en un mundo terrenal. Es triste ver que un país como Estados Unidos, que se supone que es el hogar de los libres, y que no vivimos una vida libre, feliz, segura y cómoda. Me gustaría saber si ustedes realmente creen que es apropiado en este momento. Desde 2020, hemos estado luchando. Mucha gente perdió su apartamento, mucha gente perdió su vida, su trabajo, etc. Y todavía estamos aquí en septiembre, y ustedes todavía están tratando de aumentar la renta para nosotros, y no podemos pagarla. No podemos pagarla. No podemos. Aquí no hay nadie que pueda pagarla. Los dueños quieren dinero. Mi dueño tiene edificios por todo el lugar, por todas partes. Está construyendo en algún lugar, está comprando una propiedad, y cuando lo miras, vienes a nuestro apartamento, está lleno de rocas, el agua viene de la madera, el basura está lleno en el back, y necesita dinero de nosotros para construir un apartamento por apartamento. ¿Y qué pasó con nosotros? ¿Qué pasó con nosotros? Bueno, necesito mi apartamento viejo, lo tengo todo. Necesito el refrigerador, necesito nueva cocina, necesito una nueva bañera, necesito nueva cosa. Cada invierno estamos fríes dentro. Cada invierno, me da pena, nos freímos dentro. Tengo que dormir sin parar, tengo que dormir en ropa, cuántas cosas para mí y mi hijo. Y estamos astés. Las ventanas necesitan venir. Estoy cansada de llamar al 311 porque no hay comida. ¿Por qué vamos a vivir así en Estados Unidos? Cuando ellos están en sus bolsillos y viven cómodamente, y nosotros estamos fríes en casa. No hay muebles en 2010, no tenía nada, perdí todo, agua en la hoja, y ¿sabes qué? Todo lo que hacía era arreglarlo, y sigue llegando. Continúa arreglando. Estamos luchando, estamos sufriendo. Vente al parque, hay tantas personas sin hogar porque no podemos pagarla. No podemos pagarla. Miren los edificios de Zara, vean a todos los que tienen una disculpa. Estas personas tienen abogados y jueces y todo el mundo en ellos mientras estamos luchando. Fui a la corte con ellos. Dicen que no quieren un juez como yo. Terminan eligiendo un juez, y el juez dice que no quiere venirme.
Gracias por su testimonio.
Bien.
El siguiente orador es Nelson Sierra, seguido por María Garcia. Nelson Sierra. Tengo a María Garcia y Flori Arce.
Señora María Garcia.
No, todos tienen la opción. Si es siguiente, tienes a Carlos Ortiz y a Sierra.
María Garcia.
Bueno, déjame decirles los nombres y luego veremos quién viene a continuación, ¿verdad? Así que María Garcia no parece estar presente. Flori Arce no parece estar presente. María Escobar.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es María Escobar.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es María Escobar.
Es una bendición verles a ustedes aquí porque sé que es...
Es una bendición estar aquí frente a ustedes. Más cerca del micrófono, señora, gracias.
Es una bendición verles a ustedes aquí porque sé que nos van a ayudar a todas las personas que necesitamos.
Es una bendición verlos todos aquí porque sé que todos van a ayudar a las personas que lo necesitan.
Tengo 30 años viviendo en los edificios y nunca he tenido los problemas que tenemos ahora con Zara.
He vivido en estos edificios durante 30 años y nunca hemos tenido los problemas que tenemos ahora con Zara.
Todo el tiempo he tenido mis aires afuera y nunca nadie me ha cobrado un centavo.
Disculpen señor, usted ha tenido qué afuera?
Perdón.
No lo escuché.
Aires, los aires.
Oh, todo este tiempo hemos tenido los condicionadores de aire afuera y nunca se han reparado.
Y nunca nos cobraban antes nadie eso, pero ahora mi renta solamente con ese monto me sube y me sube la renta diciendo que tengo que pagar porque el aire está afuera.
Y nunca nos cobraron por ellos. Sin embargo, ahora siguen aumentando y aumentando y diciendo que ahora tenemos que pagar por ello.
Y cuando hace frío, no hay calefacción. Ay, perdón, yo tengo demasiada calefacción, vivo en el primer piso.
Y cuando es frío afuera, no tenemos calor. Perdón, tengo demasiado calor y vivo en el primer piso.
Cuando voy a pagar la renta, yo tengo que pagar con los papeles verdes, pagando extra porque me cobran siempre la echar. Yo tengo que pagar cuando yo tengo el dinero en mi banco.
Y cuando voy a pagar la renta, tengo que usar los papeles verdes porque me cobran extra, así que solo puedo pagar cuando tengo el dinero en el banco.
Eso lo toman en cuenta ellos.
Y no toman esas cosas en consideración.
En los edificios por afuera, donde yo vivo en la 150, 11, 88 Avenida, es muy bonito por afuera. Ellos se dedican a pintar, a tener muy bonitas sus banderas hermosas con Zara, muy hermosas, bellísimas, pero por dentro tenemos, como dijeron, lleno de cucarachas, lleno de tratones, no quieren arreglarnos los techos, no quieren cambiarnos las neveras. Por una nevera que nos quieren cambiar, nos quieren subir más la renta.
Así que el exterior del edificio es hermoso. En 150, 11, 88 Avenida, el exterior del edificio es espectacular. Lo mantienen muy bonito, muy cristiano, tienen banderas hermosas, es un espacio hermoso, pero no es lo mismo en el interior. En el interior, como hemos dicho, hay gusanos, hay ratas, y nos cobran por arreglar el telón, nos cobran por el refrigerador, incluso para conseguir un refrigerador nuevo, solo van a aumentar la renta.
Antes nos pintaban cada tres años los apartamentos, ahora les digo que me quiero que ya cuántos años es que no me pintan. Dicen, no, no, sí está bien todavía, tú no necesitas.
Antes pintaban el apartamento cada tres años, y ahora cuando me pido por un trabajo nuevo, me dicen, oh, no, 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 está bien, puede durar un par de años más, está bien, no hay nada malo con eso.
Mi nevera no tiene luz y más de dos años.
Mi refrigerador no ha tenido luz en él por aproximadamente dos años.
Y no son capaces de arreglarme ni de cambiarme porque todo quieren cobrar, todo quieren sacar del bolsillo de uno lo que uno no tiene.
Y no están dispuestos a arreglarlo, no están dispuestos a cambiarlo, pero están dispuestos a cobrarme por ello y a tomar dinero de mis manos para llenar sus bolsillos.
Gracias por su atención, espero que nos puedan ayudar.
Gracias por escuchar, espero que puedan ayudarnos.
El siguiente orador es Maureen Purvin, seguido por Carlos Ortiz.
Gracias, RGV, por invitarme. Soy una residente de 88, 15, 168 St., Jamaica, y miembro de la coalición de residentes de Zara. Durante la pandemia, cuando, incluyéndome y mis vecinos en el edificio, estamos sufriendo, luchando por pagar nuestra renta, en ese momento el DSCR aprobó cinco MCIs. MCIs son una forma de aumentar la renta para edificios estabilizados. Sin embargo, no estamos recibiendo el servicio que necesitamos como residente. Todavía estamos en la pandemia y todavía estamos en dificultades financieras. Muchos de mis vecinos hasta hoy ni siquiera tienen trabajo, sobrevivimos con la ayuda de ayudas alimentarias o de programas SNAP, y algunos incluso no eligible tienen asistencia a SNAP. Como residentes de Nueva York, nuestra comida básica, la vivienda, médicos, transporte, ropa, costos están subiendo a la altura. De la misma manera, nuestro sistema económico no toca el cielo para nosotros. En mi edificio, la mayoría de mis vecinos están atrás de la renta mínima de tres meses. No somos personas ricas y no tenemos dinero de todas partes. Somos personas trabajadoras y no tenemos dinero en nuestra banca. RGV, fallando en entender qué situación estamos en, los dueños están desalojados con el eDapp y vacaciones, descuentos de apartamentos, los dueños no están en dificultades financieras. Somos residentes en dificultades financieras, y si son, tienen programas de dificultad, pueden abrir sus puertas. Así que, RGV, por favor, no actúen como si fueran blindos o muertos. Piensen en realidad y no aumenten nuestra renta, solo freínan nuestra renta. La vivienda es un derecho humano. Gracias.
El siguiente orador es Carlos Ortiz, seguido por Carl Yau.
Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Fight, fight, fight! La vivienda es un derecho humano. Mi nevera no tiene luz ya más de dos años.
My refrigerator has not had a light in it for about two years.
Y no son capaces de arreglarme ni de cambiarme porque todo quieren cobrar, todo quieren sacar del bolsillo de uno lo que uno no tiene.
And they're not willing to fix it, they're not willing to change it, but they are willing to charge me for it and take money from my hands and to fill their pockets.
Gracias por su atención, espero que nos puedan ayudar.
Thank you for listening, I hope you can help us.
Our next speaker is Maureen Purvin to be followed by Carlos Ortiz.
Thank you, RGV, for having me. I'm a tenant of 8850 168th Street, Jamaica, and a member of JARO Tenant Coalition. During the pandemic, when, including me and my neighbors, in the building we are suffering, struggling, paying our rent, that time DSCR approves five MCI's. MCI's is a way to increase rent for rent-stabilized buildings. However, we are not receiving the service we need as a tenant. We are still in a pandemic and still in financial hardship. Many of my neighbors, as of today, don't even have jobs. They are surviving with help of food agencies or SNAP programs. And some of them, even not eligible, have SNAP assistance. As a NYC resident, our basic food, housing, medicals, transportation, clothing costs are going rock high. The same way our income or economic system are not touching the sky for us. In my building, most of my neighbors are behind minimum three months' rent. We are not rich people and we don't have huge cash flow from various places. We are working-class people and we don't have cash sitting in our bank. RGV, failing to understand what situation we are in, landlords are bailed out with EDAF and vacancy apartment vouchers, landlords are not in financial hardship. We are tenants in financial hardship and if they are, they are hardship program. However, they can open their boats. So, RGV, please don't act like a blind or deaf. Think realistically and don't increase our rent, just freeze our rent. Housing is a human right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carlos Ortiz to be followed by Carolyn Yao.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Carlos Ortiz, yo soy organizador de la organización Servicios Católicos de Migración, cariñosamente conocida como CMS.
Good evening, my name is Carlos Ortiz and I'm an organizer with Catholic Migration Services, also known as CMS.
También fui inquilino de renta estabilizada, ahora vivo en un apartamento que era de renta estabilizada...
I was also a rent-stabilized tenant and I also lived in an apartment that was rent-stabilized at one point.
Y que gracias a las malas leyes de nuestro estado controladas por los caseros, ahora es un apartamento de libre mercado y probablemente me estarán desalojando en los próximos meses.
And of course, thanks to the bad laws that all of our public officials have put into place, it is now a free-market apartment and I'm sure I'm going to be homeless or out on the street in a while.
Les quiero compartir brevemente el testimonio de algunos compañeros que no están, para resumir.
I'd like to simply share the testimony of several people that are not present at the moment, just so that I can summarize what they wanted to say.
Ellos representan además las historias de cientos o miles de otros inquilinos, no solamente en Zara, en Jamaica, en Queens, sino en toda la ciudad de Nueva York.
They not only represent hundreds or thousands of tenants that belong to Zara, but also to other tenants living here in Queens and parts of the city.
Nuestra compañera Flori Arce, que recientemente después de muchos años de quererse retirar, no se podía retirar precisamente por lo altas que estaban las rentas.
Flori Arce, one of our participants who, as of recent, as most recently, wanted to retire, but she was not able to retire because of how high the rents were.
Ahora logró una congelación de renta a través del programa SCRI.
Was able to finally manage a rent freeze with the SCRI program.
Pero tiene miedo de que si decide irse a su país, o Dios no lo quiera, fallezca, que el apartamento donde ella vive con su hija, que es madre soltera, su hija no herede este beneficio y tenga que pagar rentas exorbitantes que no puede.
But she's afraid that if she were to move to her country, or God forbid, pass away, that her daughter would lose this apartment because of inheritance laws.
También nuestra vecina María García, que estaba... Quería compartir su testimonio.
María García as well, who I want, I would love to share her testimony with you.
María y su esposo perdieron el trabajo durante la pandemia, todavía no lo han recuperado.
María and her husband both lost their employment during the pandemic and as of yet, they have not regained their employment.
Tienen más de 30 mil dólares en deuda.
They are currently 30,000 dollars in arrears.
Y están enfrentando un caso de desalojo aquí mismo a unas cuantas cuadras en la Corte de Vivienda.
And they are facing an eviction case just a few blocks away from this very venue.
Me preguntan qué pueden hacer y qué solución puede salir esta noche de esta junta.
Of course, they ask me, "What is it that can be done and what do you think will be the solution that will obviously occur as a result of this meeting tonight?"
Y aquí es donde lo conecto a lo que yo personalmente quiero decir.
So I guess I will share with you what I would like to say personally to them.
No sabía que esta noche iba a recibir noticias de última hora.
Of course, I didn't know that I was going to be getting the latest news, so to speak. And you better stop that clock when the interpreter's interpreting for me, alright? You better stop that clock when he's doing that, because that's my time, alright? You said you were here because you wanted to listen, then listen, alright?
Pues yo no sabía que ya íbamos a confirmar esta noche que ya la pandemia se acabó.
So I had no idea that we were going to confirm this evening that the pandemic was ending.
Tampoco sabía que íbamos a confirmar esta noche que resulta que ya los inquilinos no tienen sobrecarga de renta, o sea, they're not rent burden anymore.
So apparently, we were also, I didn't know that we were going to confirm as well that tenants in the city were no longer rent burden.
Tampoco sabía que íbamos a confirmar esta noche que ustedes son los cuidadores del margen de ganancia de los caseros. Lo sabía, pero no lo habíamos confirmado hasta hoy.
I also didn't know that we were going to confirm that you were sort of like the gatekeepers or safekeepers of the profit margins for the landlords in the city.
Pero sí sabía que... Pero sí sabemos que el señor Gupta no cree en la renta controlada o la renta estabilizada.
But we do know that Mr. Gupta does not believe in rent control or rent stabilized. You're not allowing us to hear the testimony. If the point is to hear testimony, you're making it impossible.
And I'm about to close, so I'll be respectful of everyone's time. Lo único que quiero decir es lo siguiente.
All I want to say is the following.
Si el guideline, in Rent Guidelines Board, is profit, keeping the profit of the landlords, that is not your job, that is not your mission, that is not why you were created, right? When peoples, when people are facing the same inflation, the same rise in food and everything that landlords are complaining about, they're not even willing to open their books to get the hardship that allegedly the mom-and-pop landlords need in order to operate, then what you're doing is just keeping their margin of profit. That's what you're here for.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Yao. Carolyn Yao to be followed by Diva Inestima. Carolyn Yao? Carolyn Yao?
Hello, hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Carolyn. I am a lifelong resident of Queens, born and raised in the city. I'm an organizer with the Answer Coalition, Act Now to Stop War and End Racism. And the rent increase in this city has been unprecedented. I've been here 27 years, unprecedented. This is an attack on tenants and an attack on the working class. Five months ago, five months ago in the Bronx, as many of us know, 17 tenants died, including children, in a preventable fire. Why? Because the landlord, Rick Gropper, he refused to fix the heat and he let the tenants die. And here in Queens, very similar in Lefrak City, we've got life-threatening mold and flooding from the storms. And to this day, these landlords, not a single one of them, have been held accountable. They've been not held accountable for the safety violations and they have the audacity to ask more of us when they don't give a... When they don't even give a shit about our lives, they don't care about our lives. Again, not one of them has been made accountable. And every person sitting along that table today, you know of the open complaints, the millions of open complaints against the landlords. And yet, you would propose that the rent goes up. Shame! So let's hold the landlords accountable, because before we even think about giving them money that we earn through our labor, make them fucking accountable, sorry. Hold all the price-gouging banks and corporations accountable, because they're also raising the cost for everything in the city. Make the billionaires and millionaires in the city pay, not us! So we make them pay, not us. We, the working class, we face the brunt of this entire pandemic. We're doing the essential work, we're teaching the children, we're cooking the food, we're cleaning the streets, we're providing health care. And we've been holding down this city this entire pandemic and in this entire city's existence. And so our right to a roof over our heads is not a bargaining chip by some landlord and these development companies. So what you're looking at tonight, you're looking at people fighting back.
Thank you for your testimony.
You are looking, you're looking at people fighting back, so we will be back in bigger and bigger numbers.
Thank you for your testimony.
Everyone is gonna promise that. No to a rent increase, safe and affordable housing for all, a city for all, not the rich. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diva Inestima to be followed by... Our next speaker is Diva Inestima to be followed by David Chung. Diva Inestima. Diva Inestima? Diva Inestima.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Diva Lima. I live on 9425 57th Avenue and Jones Boulevard. Because I'm here for 40 years, right? My problem is, Zara, for... Lo hablaré en español. Zara, se la... Cuando compró ese edificio, nosotros vivimos hace 40 años ahí mismo.
So when Zara bought this building, we'd been living there for 40 years?
Entonces, Zara, Zara se la dedicó a mí, a mi hermana, que por eso... Se la, se la, le montó, acosó a mi hermana, la mayor, que era la cabeza de nosotros.
So of course, my sister was harassed.
Entonces...
She was because she was the head of household.
Yo me puse, pues yo me puse con Carlos para que nos ayudara.
So I started working with him so that he could help us.
Entonces, y ellos, ellos acosaron a mi hermana de tal término, que acabó con ella.
And of course, they harassed her to the point where they did her in.
Ella murió.
She died.
Ajá. La última sesión de la corte fue el lunes de... ¿Cómo se llama? De Santo. ¿Cómo se es? No, Lunes Santo, y el Viernes Santo ella murió.
The last court date was on Holy Monday? And she passed away on Good Friday?
Porque ella llegó a la casa a decir que, que estaba tan cansada, que estaba tan aburrida porque Zara la provocó en la corte.
She was so tired, she said that she was tired and exhausted and bored because Zara, of course, harassed her in court, in open court.
Entonces, yo ahora tengo otra hermana, que está peor, y me da miedo para que me dejen solita con ese apartamento.
And of course, there's, I have another sister now and she's actually worse.
Y entonces estoy pensando de que, de que se ponga la mano en el corazón para que nos colaboren y nos ayude porque ya somos dos.
Please, please put your hand on your heart and please help us, because at this point I will have lost two sisters.
Porque nosotros recibimos socia security.
So we're...
Con eso no es, no es suficiente.
We are social security recipients and believe you me, that is not enough.
Como la cabeza grande murió, nos quedó a nosotros dos ese peso.
Of course, the head of household passed away and now we bear the burden.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Chung to be followed by Maria Del Carmen Cruz.
Good evening, my name is David. I am a resident of Woodside, Queens. I have lived here since I was three years old. I want to first off start by saying how undemocratic this RGV hearing is. How can we have two minutes to talk about an issue that will affect us for every second of our life? How is it that only two out of the nine members are people that live in rent-stabilized housing? How is it that a member that is on your board, RP Gupta, works for a right-wing think tank called Manhattan Institute that has constantly pushed rent, to pushed up rent and made sure that there were intellectual ammunition for Mayor Giuliani to have stop and frisk? How is it that Christina Smith works for a law firm that represents landlords and operators? How is that democratic? Let's talk about the fallout from the pandemic. This continues. Since 2002, when renters paid 40% of their income, now it, people are paying over 52% of their income on rent. And it's only gonna go up if the rents increase. We're talking about evictions continuing. There are over 227,000 cases and it's only growing. One in four New Yorkers are rent burdened. They are behind on rent and you are proposing that we increase rents? We're talking about rent stabilization, which is a key factor in keeping low-income New Yorkers in their homes. 66% of rent-stabilized tenants are people of color, black, brown, Asian. 50, over 50% are immigrants and the majority are women-led households. Rent regulation is a key counterbalance against gentrification, against displacement, and homelessness. We will fight. There is no other answer but a rent freeze. We will fight and we will be back. You all better on July 1st vote to stop rents from increasing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Del Carmen Cruz to be followed by Cesar Reyes.
Hi, my name is Maria Del Carmen Cruz and I've been listening to everybody here, I've been listening to the landlord talking. And it's funny that they say that they had to spend $4,000 to fix an apartment. And the reason why they had to spend $4,000 to fix an apartment is because they haven't fixed it in years and years and years and years. The MCI, my building was hit with three MCI, my rent went up almost $300. Money that we cannot afford it, but we have to pay it. Why? Because the landlord had the lawyers and had the money. The landlords cry a lot. It's like if you have put a restaurant, I need to have meats, vegetables, and everything to cook to be able to make my business flourish. The same way landlords need to fix apartments, so they don't have to cry about the apartment being broken down, about the apartment all destroyed, about, because they're not doing nothing. They are Islam landlords, they're putting all their money in their pocket. My landlord in my building, which is a corporation, and they use the corporation to steal from the poor people. Because when they do what they do and the people start kind of doing things, they start changing the name of the corporation. But the landlords are all the same. We have landlords that own hundreds of buildings in this New York City. They don't care about us, the tenants. We have to listen to the people. The people cannot afford it. They crying, "Oh, but the gas go higher, the electricity go higher, everything go higher, what about us?" It goes, "Us? Us, we paying all of our higher money." The same like the landlords, we have to pay for all of those increases and where have we gone for money? My landlord makes, and I'm gonna do yes, I'm good with numbers. My building, they have 10 apartments empty, where there's so much demand for apartments. How come they can't afford themselves to have apartments empty? You know why? Because they're waiting for you guys to raise the increase and then they will rent it. Do you think that is fair? They are stealing from us.
Thank you.
We don't deserve that. No, like they say, you have to give me one more minute because believe me...
There's many people behind you, if everyone's gonna have the opportunity to be heard...
I understand, but it's not fair. Please, you talk in there. All of you make, all of you, all of you make at least $100,000 up. None of you, all of us.
We need to make time for our next speaker.
We go below, we make them below $45,000. You cannot talk to people about money and increase and this and that when we're not making the money. You know what we are? We are like in the middle ages.
We need to let the other speaker speak.
Well, the only reason that you live in your castle and we live in our...
We need to let the other speaker speak too.
You all greedy, you have to go for free.
Cesar Reyes is our next speaker. And after Cesar Reyes, we will have Kai Pritzker. Cesar Reyes? To be followed by Kai Pritzker.
Buenas noches a todos. Quiero comenzar primeramente con dos observaciones que pienso que son sumamente importantes.
Good evening to everyone, I would just like to start with two observations that I feel are extremely important.
Una siendo de que nosotros comenzamos la pausa de esta audiencia y retomamos la audiencia 15 minutos después del horario que ellos nos habían indicado.
One is that since we started back up after the break, that we also started about 15 minutes after the break, the supposed break?
Y pienso que esos son 15 minutos que se le debe a la comunidad.
And I feel that those 15 minutes are owed to the community.
Entonces sé de que ustedes tienen que regresar a sus hogares, pero pienso...
And I know that you all have to go back to your homes.
Pero pienso que la gente que está presente aquí y por respeto tienen que darle sus 15 minutos.
But I think that for the people that are present and for everyone else, it's only right for you to provide, to give each person their 15 minutes.
La segunda observación que quiero es lo siguiente.
My second observation is the following.
Y espero de que la junta que está aquí representando hoy puedan ver exactamente a lo que me refiero.
And I hope that the members of the board that are here today can understand what I'm going to say.
Quiero saber de los que están presentes aquí hoy ahorita, en este momento, en este instante, ¿cuántos son landlords?
I would like to know of all the people that are here right now, at this present moment, this specific moment, how many people are landlords? Go ahead, raise your hands.
Es porque se fueron, pero ¿cuántos son inquilinos aquí? ¿Cuántos inquilinos están presentes? ¿Saben por qué?
But how many people are landlords? Yay!
Y espero que, por favor, me paren ese reloj, que no me lo están parando.
And I hope you stop the clock that you're not stopping.
Es porque los inquilinos estamos aquí representando y representamos a la comunidad que está siendo afectada por sus decisiones.
It's because the tenants that are here are representing and we're also, we represent the community that's being affected by this.
Quiero tomar otra oportunidad para explicar lo siguiente.
I also want to take another opportunity to explain the following.
Y unos detalles que pienso que son muy importantes para que nuestra comunidad sepa y ustedes sepan también, aunque creo que están bien en el saber en ese aspecto.
And just add some details that I would like everyone in the community to know and that for you guys to know, even though I kind of feel that you already know this.
Yo he escuchado a los landlords llorar y llorar, que no tienen dinero, pero por ejemplo, en Manhattan, más de 50% de los apartamentos están vacíos y están vacíos a propósito.
I've heard landlords here cry and cry that they don't have any money, but for example, there's about 50% of the apartments in Manhattan are empty and they're empty for a reason.
O sea, 50% en Manhattan, estamos hablando del espacio, el lugar, que aquí en la ciudad la propiedad es más cara.
And we're talking about 50% of the apartments in Manhattan, which is a space where everything is much more expensive.
Imagínense qué está pasando en nuestras comunidades.
So imagine what's happening in our communities.
Entonces, no quiero escuchar que los landlords dicen que no tienen dinero, si ellos pueden aportar, tener más de 50% de sus apartamentos vacíos cuando nosotros tenemos un problema en esta ciudad.
So I really don't want to hear landlords talking about that they have no money when they are purposely keeping 50% of their apartments empty and not really addressing the problem that we have here.
Un detalle que mucho de ellos...
Disculpe señor, no lo escuché.
Sí, un detalle de que mucho de ellos han compartido es de que perdieron ingreso a raíz de falta de pagos de renta.
One of the details that they all share is that they lost income due to the lack of rent payments.
Y quiero incluir un detalle importante de lo que indicó JP Morgan en un análisis que ellos hicieron.
And I would like to include an important detail that JP Morgan discovered in some research that they did.
JP Morgan siendo uno de los bancos que facilita este problema aquí en esta ciudad.
JP Morgan being one of the banks that propels this situation in the city.
Ellos indicaron de que aunque los landlords en sí perdieron con los pagos de la renta, muchos de ellos disminuyeron su costo de mantenimiento al edificio por más de 50% y aún así pudieron recibir un beneficio, un gane a sus viviendas.
Thank you for your testimony.
So the... They, they...
Let's hear the translation, please.
They determined that even though the landlords say that they lost profit because of the lack of rent payments, they actually decreased or diminished their operating costs by more than 50%, so they wound up actually gaining benefits. by more than fifty percent, so they wound up actually gaining benefits.
So our next speaker is gonna be Kai Pritzker, to be followed by Wanda Hammond.
So I want to finish with the following.
Your time is done. We're gonna move on to Kai Pritzker.
My time is, my time is not done, because you owe me about fifteen seconds from the clock. Stop it, I've been keeping them. And I'm gonna say the following.
We need to make room for the many other people who are here to speak.
What, one of our, one of our local comrades earlier shared that there are more than, more than two-hundred-thousand eviction cases in housing court right now.
Is Kai Pritzker--
If you vote yes on a rent increase, you will see those evictions shoot up. And I want you guys to know, and I want you guys to know that that eviction, that those evictions that will be subsequently happening due to your vote yes for a rent increase will fall on each and every last one of your consciousnesses. So I would say the following. I think it's time for you guys to do the right thing, and I think it's important for you guys, because you owe it to the city.
Kai Pritzker is our next speaker.
Thank you.
Kai, Kai Pritzker, you can commence your testimony? Kai?
No, no.
Mr. Pritzker, Mr. Pritzker, could you commence your testimony, please?
So my name is Kai Pritzker. I live in a rent-stabilized building. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I wanted to share a message to the landlords, but it doesn't seem like they've stuck around, because this apparently isn't an important issue to them. But it's important to us, because we actually live in these buildings. And I always, I want to say that everything that they've said tonight boils down to one thing, which is that ultimately, their greatest fear in all of this is that they'll have to live like the rest of us, the way we already live. Their greatest fear is that their little investment schemes will go down in value, and they'll have to become renters, and they'll have to live in the wretched buildings that they've created for us. You know, they, they come here crying, begging for you to subsidize them. They have plenty to go around. They talk about, oh, our bottom line, our bottom line, this and the other. What about our bottom line? Our bottom line has been underwater for decades, and you do nothing. You do nothing. They talk about getting hit by inflation. We get hit by inflation. Have they ever been to a supermarket? And I, I think the answer is probably no, because they have people for that. But the point is, they say, you know, we're about to lose our profits. This is eating into our profits. Who cares? Who cares? We pay for their mortgages. We pay for their yachts. We pay for their vacation homes. We pay for their kids to go to private school. If you can't manage that bottom line, that's your problem. That's not our problem. Don't make it the city's problem. Deal with it. And finally, you know, these people, they contribute nothing to our society. They don't build these buildings. They don't repair them, we know that. All they do is collect our paychecks and live back. They don't lift a finger. They don't have a real job, like the rest of us. We make this city run. We cook the food. We drive the Ubers. We make the Subways run. They don't do shit. So to the rent guidelines board, you, everything you've heard today, you have one group of people whose greatest fear is that they'll have to sell their vacation homes, or sell their buildings, or sell their yachts, or God forbid, go back to being a renter. On the other hand, you have two-and-a-half million rent-stabilized tenants in New York City who are one paycheck from getting pushed on the street. This is your choice. This is your choice. You either side with the real estate speculators, or you side with the 2.5 million rent-stabilized tenants who are very, very curious to know where you stand.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Wanda Hammond, to be followed by Paula Costanzo. Wanda Hammond, welcome.
Hi, I'm Wanda Hammond, and I live in a rent-stabilized building in Harlem.
Could you come a little closer to the mic? Thanks.
Hi, I'm Wanda Hammond, and I live in a rent-stabilized building in Harlem. I have literally had to prepare for war in order to have any type of services in my house, one after the other, cases to court for repairs, for harassment, for overcharges, you name it, I've been there. I'm coming before the board today asking that you do the right thing when you vote. I am concerned about the New Yorkers as I look around, and homelessness is through the roof. Inflation is through the roof. Gas is through the roof. Everything is through the roof. My point being is, I was thinking about prevention and intervention, and that's pretty much in the hands of the board. The board has the power in their hands to intervene, to help out with homeless individuals, to help out where people are living in shelters. So many of us are paying rent, half of our, half of our incomes are going to the rent. When I think about six percent increase, it's unbelievable. Coming out of a pandemic from one crisis after the other, one crisis after the other, I don't know how much more New Yorkers will be able to take. But one thing I do know, no one deserves to sleep on a park bench. Nobody. Not nobody. And I stand before you with all of my other brothers and sisters who are thinking about what will happen on July first. What kind of decision will you make? Will you be thinking about your friends, or will you be thinking about the New Yorkers who've just come out, not clearly out, of the woods of a pandemic for almost three years now? People have not been able to work, losing their incomes, losing their homes, losing their family members, losing their loved ones. I just ask of you to do the right thing July first. Vote no. Vote yes to New Yorkers.
Our next speaker is Paula Costanzo, to be followed by, I'm sorry, by Helena, uh, oh, sorry, Sabrina Rodriguez, I apologize. Paula Costanzo, please.
Yes, hello. My name is Paula Costanzo. I live a couple--
A little closer to the mic, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Paula Costanzo. I live a couple of blocks from here for twenty years. I work for the city, and my landlord, I don't understand, they, they buy these buildings, they know what they're buying, and then they have you pay for their investment into their And between the rent guideline board and the Department of Community Renewal and Disbursement, they're dismantling any kind of rent stabilization. You know, everyone was chanting before, rent, housing is a right, and there was a landlord over there that says, no, it's not a right. I don't know what the answer to that is, but there must have been some reason rent stabilization came into being. There must have been some reason for that. My rent, right now, they, they use this, the rent, the landlords use the rents, the DCHR and you. If they don't get a raise from you, they fix it with these MCI's. So that way, if they don't get it from you, they get it from the MCI. I have, I'm gonna have three rent increases this year. Two of them are from MCI's. One, I hope will not be from you. But what's to stop them adding another MCI? You know? This is their way of raising the rent. I work for the city, okay? Where am I gonna go? Where am I gonna go after this? That's all I, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
And I hope this isn't an illusion, that this hearing is not an illusion, like an MTA hearing on subway and bus routes, which is like a condescension to the public, that they're being heard. I hope that that's not true. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Sabrina Rodriguez, to be followed by Chris Boston. Sabrina Rodriguez, welcome.
Buenas noches, queridos representantes de la junta.
Good evening, representatives of the board.
No es justo que quieren aumentar los incrementos a la renta.
It's not fair that you want to increase the rent.
Yo estoy en, en el treinta y siete cincuenta y dos del ochenta y nueve Street por veintitrés años.
I've lived at thirty-seven fifty-two eighty-ninth Street for twenty-three years.
Muchas compañías han cambiado de, de uno a otro.
We've gone through many companies, like one after the other.
Me pregunto, ¿por qué quieren aumentar los incrementos? Cuando diferentes dueños de, de los managers, diferentes managers que han cambiado y vienen a lo mismo, a lo mismo.
I ask myself, why do they want to increase the rent when there's always a different manager, there's always a different owner, like, and yet we all, always, they always come to the same conclusion?
Los servicios siempre están hasta abajo.
The services are always on the decline.
La seguridad. Cuando estamos en nuestro apartamento pagando renta, hubo un tiempo que mi esposo se enfermó. Teníamos que venir a corte por un error de la oficina.
Safety is also on the decline, and so, but you're in your, we're in our apartments paying rent. There was a time when my husband became ill, and we had to come to court because of the rent.
¿Por qué? ¿Por qué me pregunto?
Why? I ask myself.
Supers, supers, y los, y los dueños del edificio, nos quieren estropear nuestros derechos.
The supers and the owners of the buildings just want to trample over our rights.
Ahora que estamos todavía en una pandemia--
Now, while we're still in a pandemic--
Cuando los precios siempre suben de la comida--
When--
Los, los trabajos son bajos. No se encuentran estables todavía.
Where food prices are increasing and jobs are on, are decreasing, and we cannot find jobs either.
Siento un nudo en mi corazón porque familiares los he perdido.
I feel a knot in my heart because I have lost relatives.
Les pido que se toquen el corazón, que somos gente trabajadora.
I ask you to touch your hearts, because we are working people.
No merecemos ese trato del, del dueño, de los supers, que nos hostigan, les pedimos ayuda.
We don't deserve this treatment from the supers or the owners when, we don't deserve this harassment when we ask them for help.
Ahora, ahora en abril, mi baño se inundó.
In April, my bathroom flooded.
So, del toiler salió todas esas aguas negras. Les llamamos al super.
So all of that sewage came out of my toilet.
No nos ayudó.
We called the super, and he did not help us.
No hubo ninguna respuesta del dueño.
There was no answer from the owner.
De la estufa, le, le mencioné la estufa al super.
I mentioned the stove to the super.
Nunca me, me contestó.
He never had a reply.
Había un fuego.
Thank you for your testimony.
There was a fire? Gracias por su testimonio.
No. Permítame un segundo más.
No, please allow me one more second.
Por favor. Últimamente, mi nevera, le dije al super, mi nevera está frizando abajo.
I mentioned to the super that my refrigerator was freezing at the bottom part.
Yeah.
Thank you for your testimony.
Y no, no, no me dio ninguna respuesta.
And I didn't get any reply at all.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio, señora.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Boston, to be followed by Maria Segura. Chris Boston, then Maria Segura.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Chris Boston. I'm a seventy-nine-year-old widow, living on a fixed income, a portion of my husband's social security. I'm almost embarrassed to be up here in a way, after the, after the--
I'm sorry, could we be quiet just so we can hear the speaker? Thank you.
I'm almost embarrassed to be up here, listening to the sad stories, but I do, I have to remind myself that everything is relative. I moved to New York City from Wichita, Kansas, in nineteen sixty-four, and I, I worked here for sixteen years. I left for thirty-two years. And when all of my family passed away, I decided to go, come back, after thirty-two years, to come back to my beloved city that I had wonderful memories of. My first apartment in two thousand and eleven, when I moved back, was torn down, and an enormous condominium was built in its place, where the apartments, the condominium started at five million. So then I moved a few blocks up to a Fair Market apartment that was the first real home that I had ever had in my entire life. And within three years, I had to leave, because he had raised a total, within three years, he had raised it sixty percent. All right, so I'll move on. So then I moved, five years ago, I moved to a rent-stabilized apartment. My rent, I pay eighty-seven percent of my gross income on my rent. No. So the other thing is, my landlord refuses to supply heat, so, and I, oh dear, this goes so quickly. So anyway-- So I've called three-one-one hundreds of times. It does no good. My Con Edison bill has tripled, because I'm, I'm surviving with three heaters, space heaters.
Thank you for your testimony. Maria Segura, to be followed by--
Buenas noches, señores junta directiva.
Good evening to the RGB board.
Mi nombre es Maria Segura.
My name is Maria Segura.
Y vivo en los edificios de Cosmopolitan.
And I live at the Cosmopolitan buildings.
En la cuarenta y ocho, cuarenta y seis, de la cuarenta y siete Street.
At forty-eight dash forty-six, Forty-Seven Street Woodside.
Desde hace veintisiete años.
For the last twenty-seven years now.
Trabajo como home health aide.
I work as a home health aide.
Atendiendo pacientes en los hogares.
And I take care of patients in their own homes.
Y este salario está en la escala de lo más mínimo.
And of course, this pay scale is at the bare minimum.
Por eso mis ingresos son muy limitados.
Which is why my income is very limited.
Y si antes me era difícil pagar la renta--
And if it was difficult for me to pay the rent before--
Aún más se agudizó con lo de la pandemia.
It became even worse during the pandemic.
Y si esto, nos, si ustedes, señores de la junta directiva, hacen un aumento--
And if you, the RGB board, allows these increases to pass--
Créame, que ni Cosmopolitan tuviera que ir a la corte para sacarme, porque yo solita me tendría que ir, porque no puedo pagar la renta.
Believe you me, Cosmopolitan would not have to take me to court, because I would have to leave on my own accord, because I wouldn't be able to afford the rent.
En estos edificios también son edificios de renta estabilizada.
These buildings have rent-stabilized apartments.
Que son renta que están cobrando los MCI, que nos tienen hasta aquí.
Which is rent that's being charged because of the MCI's, and I'm up to here with the MCI's.
Por eso, señores junta de directiva.
So, dear RGB board--
Yo les pido--
I ask you.
Que si ustedes--
That if you--
Hacen estos aumentos-- Hacen estos aumentos.
Pass these increases.
Si ustedes se ponen, se...
That if you.
Si ustedes se parcializan.
Are partial to.
Por el lado de los landlords.
Are the, if you are partial to the landlords.
Me estarían condenando a vivir en la calle.
You would be condemning me to living on the street.
Basta ya.
Enough already.
Basta ya de estar del lado de los landlords.
Enough already with the favoritism in the landlords.
Basta ya de tantos aumentos.
Enough with the increases.
Basta ya de tanto abuso.
Enough with the increases and the abuse.
El sistema también se pone del lado de los caseros.
The system also supports the landlords.
Que ellos apoyan y aprueban los aumentos para ponernos en la calle.
Of course, you support and approve these, uh, increases and you put us on the street.
Cuando el sistema también es, saben que los inquilinos año tras año le hemos venido llenando los bolsillos, enriqueciándolos a todos los caseros.
When year after year, all we do as, as tenants is line the pockets of all of these landlords, making them even filthier, even richer.
Señores junta directiva.
Again, RGB board.
Hoy es el día.
Today is the day.
Hoy es el día.
Today is the day.
Que ustedes pueden hacer historia.
That you can make history.
Que ustedes nos pueden tatuar sus nombres a nuestras mentes.
That you can tattoo our names on your minds.
Porque tocar en la conciencia.
And please look into your conscience.
Y no permitan que familias, que inquilinos, que niñas, que adolescentes.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio, señora. Proveamos la lista de los hones.
So that we don't show up on homeless list. Thank you.
We have Yocasta Rojas to be followed by Nahida Begum. I'm sorry. Yocasta Rojas and then Nahida Begum.
Rojas.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Yocasta Rojas. Um, as I was walking by today from work, I go every day to work with this, um, heavy burden on my head. Um, am I going to be able to stay in my studio apartment? Um, it's 1,800 right now, market rate is 2,200. By mistake of my renewal, they forgot to put the rider and I was able to see how much that apartment actually cost. And I almost fainted. I'm like, how am I going to survive another year? Am I gonna have to go back to living into the rooms? And the rooms, if you go on Trulia or anywhere, they're 1,500, 1,000 for one room to live with other people and it's not a good condition. So, I worked for the city for 15 years and I put in my taxes and I do everything. I put myself through school, paying my, my own tuition. And I don't feel like there's an end in sight. Everything is going higher. $200 for food shopping. The metro car is 126. I don't even know when's the next rent hike on that anyway. So, I, I don't feel any hope. I sometimes I just wanna leave the city, go upstate or go to Florida and everywhere is going higher. So I'm like, who's on our side? Um, my building is rent stabilized and I pass around over here going home and I hear very passionate advocates telling me, it's gonna go up 6%. And all of a sudden, that same anxiety I felt during my renewal, that same anxiety, I felt it. I'm like, okay, so this nightmare is not over. This could happen to me any minute. Like, where am I gonna end up? I am by myself in this country. It's only my sister and my niece. My whole life, I've worked. My whole life, I've been by myself. My parents in DR, my mom passed away. And all I want is to just feel that I'm stabilized. There's nothing stabilized about just disrupting my stabilization. We need that. And the youth like me, we need that. We need to hold on to something so we can keep working and be in good productive citizens.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nahida Begum to be followed by Lauren Springer.
Good evening, my name is Nahida Begum. I am two-time cancer survivor. My only income is SSI. It is very difficult to pay my rent. On top of it, I have two MCI rent increase. I am, I am worried where I, how, where and how I will get extra money to pay my rent. This is development country, we cannot live in the street. So, RGB, please, don't increase the rent. Just freezing the rent, open your heart. We need four things important, everybody. Food, housing, health, education. Housing is the one of them. Please, don't increase our rent and how, and housing is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Springer, to be followed by Christina Jeffers.
Good eve- can you...
Good evening.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I sound muffled. Is it, did I? Okay. My name is Lauren Springer. I'm a native New Yorker who grew up in public housing and for the past 27 and a half years have been a rent-regulated tenant. I'm also a volunteer tenant leader with Catholic Migration Services and a steering committee member for the Right to Counsel Coalition, New York City Coalition. I'm here tonight on behalf of my family, friends and neighbors to oppose any rent increase. Tenants simply cannot afford a rent increase. Too many are still rent burdened, struggling financially to survive, to keep a roof over their heads or are forced into the untenable position of choosing between paying rent or food, medical expenses, education, et cetera. They are just trying to find their way out of a global pandemic that they didn't create but were impacted by where government action and inaction made things worse and the pandemic is not over. No decision should be made by this board without considering the broader landscape that New York tenants are operating under. Since the expiration of the eviction moratorium in January 2002, 22, there have been thousands of new eviction filings each month. The money allotted for ERAP was quickly depleted and has yet to be replenished. The New York City law guaranteeing a right to counsel to eligible tenants facing eviction proceedings, which tenants fought hard to win and which is, was successful in keeping 86% of tenants in their homes, is being subverted by a court system that is prioritizing the clearing of their dockets ahead of effectuating a tenant's right to counsel. Instead of slowing down cases to deal with the heavy backlog and new case filings, the court system is forcing tenants to proceed without an attorney even though they are entitled to one. The state government has fallen short in addressing this moment of crisis. Specifically, they failed to pass statewide RTC legislation. They failed to pass good cause eviction before their legislative session ended. The cumulative effect of all these decisions or lack thereof will exact a heavy toll on individuals and on society as more people end up homeless or in, or in shelters. While this board has no jurisdiction over the state matters, it does have decision-making power regarding rent increases. It does have the power to decide whether it wants to be part of the problem or solution, whether it wants to place another financial burden on tenants that they can ill afford. Know that the decision you make this month will have long-lasting consequences that will either keep tenants in their homes or create more homelessness. I implore you to reject any rent increases.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina Jeffers, to be followed by Doris Gomez.
Hi, my name is Christina Jeffers. I've been in my building for 30 years in 94, 25, 57 Avenue. My landlord is Sarah. Since they came to my building for the last three years, it's been a nightmare. They know what we're getting into it. They've been applied for major capital improvements. We waiting for the approval. How can they come whining for money when through the pandemic, they were doing construction non-stop? Our building is infested with rats. They don't do proper repairs. And here, tonight, I just learned that you, why our housing, to keep our housing, have depend on people that never been living in a, in a feed income housing? Why? And tonight, all you and experts, and in here, we have to ask for not increase is a criminal. If you increase the rent, all is gonna be the cost of clear more problems and people being in the street. This is not right. How can you be of the side of the landlords instead of the sides of the people? This, the living is not supposed to be profitable. We need our house. We need to live in peace in our house. No working to death to maintain a roof in our head. I'm not agree to these increases because they getting it to the MCIs. Our building, we facing over $200 a month and then this 6%? This is not right. This is a crime. We deserve our housing and be in peace. No be fighting and working to death in order to have a roof over our house. Thank you.
Doris Gomez.
Oye, se vive, se siente. Se vive, se siente, el pueblo.
Do any of you really care what's going on here today?
We have one last speaker.
I know. Do you, any of you care for what's going on here today? Because to me, I think you all board today are there, listening to people. You see, when your life is so resolved and you have money, you forget about the people don't have the money. We don't have the money. We don't have the money.
Our last speaker is Leah Goodridge for the night.
Good evening. Uh, I was on this board, uh, for nearly four years and I can't believe I'm coming back, uh, two years into the pandemic against a 6% rent increase. I find it very funny that when it comes to tenants, there has always been talk about those are feelings, not facts. Yet in the same breath, these same people will say rent increase because of landlords, small landlords, without any facts. Let's look at the facts. Fact one, New York City unemployment is almost double the national average. The nation is at 4%, New York City is at 7.6%. Fact two, economists predict a recession. Fact three, nearly 50% of New Yorkers are rent burdened. Fact four, median rent in Manhattan, this is for all housing, is at $4,000. This is a war against the working class. The next time that you go to a hospital and a nurse helps you, the next time you hop in Uber, the next time you see your parents' home health aide, the next time you see a waiter or waitress, the next time you see your cashier, the next time you order food and see the delivery person drop it off, the next time you see a tenant organizer, the next time you take the train and you inevitably see a homeless person asking for help. All of these people live in New York City and these are also the people outside of us in this room who you have to answer to. This is one of the last affordable options for affordable housing. NYCHA is out. I read an article that an employee waited for over 10 years on the waitlist and that was then and who knows if there will even be a NYCHA? That's a whole nother issue. Every year, we hear this narrative equating tenants on the brink of homelessness with landlords struggling to make a profit. It's a false equivalency. Survival to exist cannot be compared with a business venture. Rent freeze now.
We have, we have no more speakers for the night. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Uh, Christian, do I hear a second for a motion to adjourn? Alex seconds. We're adjourned. Our next meeting will be Wednesday at Hostos in the Bronx. What's, what's your name?
My name is Anna Hilario.
Did you, did you register?
Someone else didn't get called, but he already left too. So two names haven't been called, dale. Okay. So, mi nombre es Anna Hilario y trabajo para la ciudad, el departamento de educación.
My name is Anna and I work for the city in Department of Education.
Trabajo como asistente de maestro.
I, I work as a teacher's assistant.
Y tengo un segundo trabajo.
And I have a second job.
Mi esposo tiene dos trabajos.
My husband also has two jobs.
Tengo dos hijas.
I have two daughters.
Y todas los, todas las MCIs que Sarah nos ha puesto encima, no podemos pagar la renta.
And with all of the MCIs that, uh, Sarah has imposed on us, we cannot pay the rent.
Estoy aquí para decirles que por favor.
To please?
Nos escuchen a todos nosotros.
Listen to all of us.
Que somos los que vivimos en los apartamentos porque claro, ustedes no.
We're the ones that live in those apartments.
Ustedes viven en sus casas grandes y no tienen que preocuparse de tener muchos trabajos como nosotros.
We, we're the ones that live in the apartments unlike you who live in your big houses and you don't have to worry about having several jobs like us.
Ustedes no tienen que preocuparse si tienen suficiente dinero para la comida de sus familias.
You don't have to worry about having enough money to feed your families.
Y no porque yo no fui a la escuela, porque sí fui a la escuela.
And it's not because I didn't go to school. I did go to school.
Y aún así, la renta sube y sube y sube.
And even with that, rent continues to increase and increase and increase.
Es ridículo que venimos a este país, país desarrollado, ciudad de Nueva York y tenemos que estar aquí suplicándoles para que no nos suban la renta.
It's absolutely ridiculous that we have to come from another country to this country, a developed country, to the, to New York City and we have to beg you here in this space to not increase our rent.
Todavía tengo tiempo, pero mi hija tiene algo que decirles a ustedes.
I still have time, but my daughter has something to tell you.
I don't mean to do this anymore. My name probably doesn't matter to you, so whatever. Every winter, it's so cold, it's so cold and we always ask the people to fix a heater. They never fix it, so that's probably why me and my sister always get sick every single winter. But you probably don't care, so that doesn't matter. Sometimes, imagine a family, they don't know, they never have time to feed their children. They do have time actually, but they don't have the money because they're trying to keep a roof over their children's head, their children's head. So they barely have enough food to feed their children and they get sick because they're so skinny in bone, not enough energy to feed, to live throughout the day. And because they're so hungry, they can't focus in school because their stomach is hurting that, and that affects them negatively in their education.
Thank you for your testimony. Have a good night, all.
Gracias por su testimonio, buenas noches a todos.